The 30th, 31st regular meeting of the Medford City Council will be called to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Vice President Caraviallo.
Yes.
Counsel Delarussell.
Present.
Counsel Knight.
Present.
Counsel Longo Kern.
Present.
Counsel Marks.
Present.
Counsel Penta.
Present.
President Camusso.
Present. Seven members present, zero in the absence. Please stand to salute our flag. Item 14-712, petition by Emily Stein, 177 High Street, Medford, Mass., to address the council about distracted driving. Your name and address for the record, please.
Emily Stein, 177 High Street.
Thank you.
So I'm here as a resident of Medford, as a parent, as a nurse, as a road safety advocate, and as a victim, to just address the issue of distracted driving. It's not just simply texting, using your phone, but it's everything. I feel it's an epidemic across the country. It goes across every age group, every race, every, you know, other demographic and region, whether it's in the city driving or out in the country. I have been involved in this work for the last two years. I know Mayor McGlynn is active in supporting what we've been doing. For the last two years, we've gone to Medford High School to give a presentation on distracted driving for the high schoolers. But I view this as more of a societal problem. It's not just teenagers. Everyone says, "Oh, it's a teenage problem, they're always on their phone." It's every age. And what I'm trying to do is say, let's start with Medford. Let's have this be a community where we not only have gone to the high schools for several years, the mayor is, you know, on board, but to have a community-wide commitment to say, "Let's stop distracted driving in our community," whether we're putting up signs, whether we're having, you know, more local businesses, community members aware of it and supporting it, just to build the visibility. I think so many people aren't aware that just talking on their phone, they could actually cause a fatal crash. It's something that the public needs to know a lot about. I've been doing this for two years because my father was killed, and this is why I'm here. And I've been doing this work, this is what I'm dedicated to. And everyone says, "Oh, start with your family, start with your friends," and this is why I'm here, because I thought, "Let's have Medford be a place that could be a stand-up community to say, 'We're against this.'" I'm getting the law enforcement involved. I'm going to try to go to some police meetings and see what they can do. I mean, if you stand out in front of my house during rush hour traffic, everyone is on their phone, everyone is looking down. And it scares me to be on the road, it scares me to walk down the street, because I've seen a lot of bad driving, and most often is due to distraction. So I'm just putting it out here, this is my first time here, I just wanted to say what people think. I'm trying to pair up with a Gannas Driving School, now that they're located in the square, and I was talking with the owner to say, "Let's have a free evening session with adults. Anyone in the community can come, they can bring their child, even better." So that way, the family, it can be like a family agreement to say, "We're going to sign a ban against phone use in the car, we're going to, you know, agree to do this together." So that's one thing we're doing. And then on January 7th, we will be presenting at the high school. Mayor McGlynn, I know he's tried several times to be there in the past year, the past two years, so hopefully he will be there. But that will be the high school. I'm teamed up with the Mass. Academy of Trial Attorneys, and they have been working with the mayor, and they're taking this to as many high schools across the state as they can, to give a presentation that's been designed to educate on distracted driving. So that's pretty much it. I am new to Medford, I've been here about a year and a half, but I feel like this, it is a community that could take this on.
Thank you very much, Emily. The chair recognizes Counsel Longo Kern.
Thank you, President Camusso. Thank you, Emily, for coming. Do you work for a specific organization, or you do this on the side as like, just to raise awareness, volunteerism?
I mean, it's unpaid work right now. I am partnered with NDD.org. It's an organization that was founded by a father who lost his daughter due to distracted driver, and he's taking this nationally. So he's been giving presentations for the last three years across the entire country. And he's training lawyers. He was a lawyer himself, so he's training lawyers to, you know, give this presentation to as many schools as they can. So I know in Massachusetts, it's been about 7,000 presentations that have been given to high schools.
Is there anything in the middle school or grade schools?
No. And that's how I have my three-year-old trained, say, "You better put that phone down," or she looks at other cars and notices it. So I believe that the younger you go, they have the power to change their parents' behavior, as well as just, you know, they grow up with that awareness.
Yeah, I mean, I just having two small, two small children that are, you know, walking age, when we walk to school, even where just from parking and walking to school, there's distracted drivers everywhere. So something in the grade schools would be great, just to teach children to look both ways when they cross the street.
Right.
Look, they'll be, think they're okay because they're running on the sidewalk, but they're not, because people are backing out of their driveways without, you know, without looking.
Right.
So, I mean, I applaud you for your volunteerism and, you know, feel awful what you've been through, but I think what you're doing for the community is great. I mean, I do some personal injury work, and it's a horror story, you know, it's very scary. I drive on 10 and 2 because I just read about, you know, what goes on and the accidents that take place.
Right.
So we take it very seriously. I'm sure the council and anything, you know, I personally or the council can do to help you. We're on board, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thanks very much.
The chair recognizes Counsel Penta. Ms. Stein.
You represent the unfortunate part of what happens in society. Some people don't get involved until it happens to them, and unfortunately, it's with you and your dad. But this is a huge issue, and I'm glad you brought it up, and I agree with Counsel Longo Kern. You know, these kids go to school, you know, and they're not worried about, you know, who's pulling out of a driveway, or who might be coming down the street at a reckless speed. But if you thought of going to the State Department of Public Safety, and they have, I believe, it's kitty grants, I could be wrong with the name, but I think it's something like that, and they promote, through financial aid, having somebody maybe even come up to the school and go through sample demonstrations as what to look out for. You know, you can talk to the kid, or the children, but if it demonstrated right in front of them, you know, it's live and it's real.
Right.
And, you know, and I think that could possibly, you know, it's just another avenue to get more exposure, but at the same time, increase the liability that you don't really want to have anyone else, you know, go through such as yourself, unfortunately. But, you know, it did happen, and, you know, and I'm glad you're doing what you're doing, and you should be complimented. But to keep this thing going and keep it alive, and making a presentation, and I would suggest that you go before the school committee too, and make the same suggestion to them, because they have the owner's responsibility of making sure those kids get to school.
Right.
Correctly.
And that, starting with the elementary school.
Right, right. And this is, and this is one of their obligations and their way of representing you, the taxpayers, and the children of this community. So I think you have two viable options to go to, to make your case heard, and at the same time, get some, get some more help.
So the Department of Public Safety.
The State Department of Public Safety.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And also, if you would reach out to the superintendent of schools.
Yeah.
He has a public educational access channel. I'm sure he'd be more than happy to get your message out there.
That's a great point. I've met with him, he's great.
So he's very, very amenable to doing that on important issues. The chair recognizes Vice President Caraviallo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Emily, again, I want to commend you for coming up to, as someone who drives all day, I think I see it more than anybody. I mean, people just, I mean, it isn't so much, you know, the talking, and people have Bluetooth, now they're talking on Bluetooth, but the texting is, I mean, just ridiculous.
Yep.
And I see it constantly, people just texting, I don't want to say, driving around. You know, you know, people talk about distracted driving, we should be talking about distracted walking.
Yes, I agree.
Which is just as bad, because you see, when you're downtown, people are just obsessed with their phones, and they're walking on the streets and don't even, I mean, it's bad, now people aren't paying attention to cars, but now you're not even paying attention, walking out into the streets of cities. And, again, I commend you for your work, and I say, I think the next thing is, should be distracted walking.
I know London has put up cushions, like football cushions, around lampposts, because so many people have injured them.
Yeah.
They're walking into it.
You see the people with their headphones, and they're just walking and just not paying attention or anything.
Yeah. That's something that we are taking on as pedestrian safety as well, because I think so many, so many incidents are happening because everyone's looking down, and then no one knows, they call it an accident.
Yes.
Because no one's at fault, because they were looking down, they don't even know. So what I do is, when I went to speak at a medical center, and I said, "Everyone, I'm challenging you for the next week, put your phones away, watch where you're going, and just look at everyone out there."
We're obsessed, we're obsessed with our phones, and people have to understand, we're not that important, that we need to be in touch with everybody 24 hours a day.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The chair recognizes Counsel Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much, and Ms. Stein, thank you very much for coming down here, and welcome to the city. We're glad to see that you're willing to be an active participant in government. I think this is a worthwhile endeavor, Mr. President, and I think that it might make sense for this council to send a paper to the Traffic and Parking Commission, for them to maybe conduct an investigation and report back to this council what their findings are, and what steps they feel is appropriate for us to take as a community to ensure that we actually address the issue.
On the motion of Counsel Knight to send this to the Traffic Commission, the chair recognizes Counsel Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there any current legislation that you're tracking now, or something that maybe we as a council can review to, you know, to get on board to support?
Absolutely. Massachusetts, I think, since 2007 has been a texting, you know, there's a texting ban. They keep shutting down the hands-free ban. So I know AAA is behind it, there are a lot of agencies who are behind it, but, again, it does come down to, you know, the local, the reps. I think it was, the Senate passed, but the reps didn't, I forget where it was held up. So yes, absolutely. I mean, again, that's not, that's a step. Like, I know in Canada, they have complete ban on all phone use, but we're a little behind. So a hands-free ban would be a huge help for law enforcement to catch people, because right now, if they see someone texting, they might pull them over and they say, "Oh, I was just dialing a number." So it's hard for the law enforcement to catch people. So if there is a hands-free ban that passes in Massachusetts, that's one step, a big step, towards putting a stop to a lot of the incidents out there. As far as who to influence, I don't know. I can, I can do some legwork and get back. I know AAA is really behind it. Mary Maguire at AAA has been trying to track all the politicians who need to be more educated on this issue. But that's one step.
Mr. President, just a thought. I wonder if we as a community can enact our own hands-free ban, or does that have to be done on the state level? I'm not sure if that's possible, but maybe we can ask city solicitor. I agree with you 100%, and I think everyone behind this railing that drives a car, that's all you see, people on the phone constantly, and they're not paying attention. And that goes for, you know, you hate to say it, but it's not only on the phone, I see people putting makeup on while they're driving.
Eating sandwiches, eating out of bowls of cereal.
A host of things while they're driving. Sometimes I'm in my car saying, "Please, just drive your car," because they'll be in the middle of the road, not moving, while traffic's going around them, it's, it's just, it's unbelievable, in my opinion. And I read an article, I think it was a month or two ago in The Globe, that the number of tickets issued, we would think, because we have the texting ban, that there's a lot of tickets being issued. It's minimal, if many at all, in this Commonwealth. And one of the reasons is, like you mentioned, it's hard to pinpoint and catch someone in the act, it could be dialing the phone, make a phone call, or so forth.
And they have every excuse in the book.
I like the hands-free ban, although when you're talking, you can still get distracted, but if you're talking to a passenger, you can be distracted. So I think it's a step in the right direction.
Yeah.
To provide the safety we need on our streets. So, Mr. President, if I can make that in the form of a motion, if we as a community can implement our own hands-free ban within the parameter of, perimeter of our city?
Okay. Thank you very much, and we're going to take a vote right now on the two motions. One is for Counsel Knight, from Counsel Knight, to refer this to the Traffic Commission, and that was amended as well by Counsel Marks, to ask the city solicitor if the city of Medford can put their own ban in to make it hands-free only while driving a vehicle. The clerk will call, roll call vote?
Please.
The clerk will call the roll. Thank you.
Yes.
Counsel Delarussell.
Yes.
Counsel Knight.
Yes.
Counsel Longo Kern.
Yes.
Counsel Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Penta.
Yes.
President Camusso.
Yes, by a vote of seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the motion passes as amended, and thank you very much for your presentation this evening. Just a quick announcement, if the council will indulge me, the DPW this evening dropped off a package to the members of this city council to notify the residents of this community about the upcoming street sweeping, which will take place between November 3rd and November 24th throughout the community. The following places, publicly notifications have went out, so if you have any questions or concerns, you can check one of these media outlets, the Medford Transcript, the Medford Mercury, the Medford Page on the Boston Globe, The Patch, Made in Medford, it's been posted in the library, the Council on Aging, City Hall, it's also on the city website at medford.org, it's on the city of Medford's Facebook and Twitter page, Channel 15, which is the educational channel. Tufts University has been notified regarding all four, the students, the faculty, the graduates, and the staff will be getting an email, as well as the Senior Sounds, that is the local newspaper for our senior citizens. The flashing signs will be out, as well as the A-frames, and Captain Clemente will be putting together a reverse 911 to notify different areas of their street sweeping. So all of these different venues you can go to. If you have any questions, you can call the mayor's office at 781-393-2408. Item 14-713, petition by Jeanne M. Martin, 10 Cummings Street, Medford, Mass., to address the council about parking enforcement. Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Jean Martin, 10 Cummings Street. Parking enforcement should be a uniformed program throughout the city without exception. This city has seen enough favoritism, and it needs to stop. All sections of the city should be mandated to abide by the parking rules in order to keep the streets free and clear for public use. A car on a public way is a privilege, not a right. I want to repeat that. A car on a public way is a privilege, not a right. Should this city find itself in a power outage, lockdown, or a major snowstorm, DPW and emergency vehicles have the right of way, and no one should argue that their vehicle was destroyed if they are not abiding by the parking rules of the city. It also assists the national grid, telephone companies, and the like to provide services to you. Discontent among the masses will occur, and people will more, with more influence in the city, will ask for ticket forgiveness. This cannot stand. If you tweak the program, tweak it for all, not just for the well-connected in the city. As for the money that comes from the tickets in the squares, this revenue needs to be, to go towards signs in all sections of the city, as the expansion of the program continues. We will need to hire ticketing personnel, and this will pay for itself. The mayor has, in other words, spoiled all the citizens, but the business districts as well, because we should have had meters 10 years ago. And now they are balking. Most cities our size have had parking restrictions years ago. I am sorry that the mayor has indulged them, but the time has passed for free parking. A new day is dawning, and a cost of business is inevitable. This is only the beginning. The people will be in this hall complaining once the broader city starts being tagged. I don't believe that the judicial piece of the enforcement should be in the hands of the mayor. He is clearly biased, and will forgive his political friends. It should be someone outside City Hall. Sadly, poorer sections of the city will be fined, will be fined more frequently and pay a higher cost of living, but this cannot be avoided. The least we can do is administer ticketing in a fair, as possible, through our, all sections of the city to decrease this tension the best we can. Commercial vehicles in front of fire hydrants, wheelchair spots, and the like, need to be ticketed in the nicer parts of the city, so that everyone buys into the plan. It will mitigate some dissent and resentment. And I have a question for those that have read the report. Does this report deal with the issue of the people who already got permit parking? Like, I pay $10 a year. Is that part of this contracting situation, where they're going to have personnel go around and check all of the permit parking streets? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Okay, then that's my statement, thank you very much.
What did you, what did you say?
Counsel Penta.
Jeanne, can you ask that question again?
For those people that pay $10 a year, I paid $10 a year for, I don't know, five, six, seven years, or whatever. My parents have been gone since 2008. So I've been paying since then, $10 a year for parking enforcement on my street. And we don't, we don't have parking enforcement in the city of Medford, nobody comes around to ticket on a regular basis. I have a corner, I have a dead-end street, the corner has a person parked on there that shouldn't be there, because it makes it narrow for emergency vehicles to come in and go out. It should be 100 feet from the corner, the sign, but it's not, so I'd like to have that removed, and so that there's nobody on the corner, because it's, there's only one way in and out of the street.
So that was your question?
Oh, my question is, in the, with the ticketing, are you going to have personnel actually coming around? I know that the meters are going into the squares, but are there going to be people going around and giving tickets to the people who already have paid permit parking?
From the way I understand that, in reading the addendums that we were given last week, there's anywhere from 2,500 to 2,600 stickers that have already been issued, and I don't think they have been reissued as of July 1st of this year. That's a question, I believe, that needs to be answered, because nobody's got the answer for that.
She's talking, I think she's talking resident permit parking. Resident permit parking is going to be.
Yeah, resident, I pay $10 a year.
It's going to be enforced under this proposal.
Say it again, it's what?
Resident permit parking is part of the enforcement.
But it's.
It is. Okay. So who's going to come around? The people from the contract?
The contract people and the police department. They remain the right to give out tickets.
Okay, thank you.
But there's two parts to that, permit parking, one is residential, and one is commercial, so I just didn't know.
Oh, okay. I didn't understand that. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So I, my point is, is that I want this parking program to go citywide, and I want it to be in all sections of the city, so that there, that it doesn't cause discontent among certain parts of the city up against other parts of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion of Counsel Knight to receive and place on file, all those in favor, all those opposed, the ayes have it. Item 14-714, petition by Matthew Page Lieberman. Suspension of the rules has been requested by Counsel Longo Kern. For which paper? 14-715. All those in favor? All those opposed, the ayes have it. To the Honorable President and members of the Medford City Council, from Michael J. McGlynn, Mayor, paper 14-715. This is an expenditure from the law recount request.
Yes.
And the description is as follows. The claimant, State Farm Insurance, as a subrogee for its.
Motion to waive the reading and just give a brief synopsis, Mr. President.
Motion to waive the reading by Counsel Marks, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. The claimant is State Farm Insurance, and they're representing Mrs. Knoffs. Her motor vehicle was struck while parked on Edison Avenue by a DPW Sander. The city has received all releases. Our legal department, which is represented this evening by our Assistant City Solicitor, and the claim has been brought before this council for $4,498.94. The chair awaits a motion. On the motion of approval by Counsel Delarussell, seconded by Counsel Longo Kern and Vice President Caraviallo, the clerk will call the roll.
Vice President.
Yes.
Counsel Delarussell.
Yes.
Counsel Knight.
Yes.
Counsel Longo Kern.
Yes.
Counsel Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Penta.
Yes.
President Camusso.
Yes, by a vote of seven in the affirmative, the paper passes. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselors.
On the motion to revert back to the regular order of business, all those in favor, all those opposed, the ayes have it. Item 14-714, petition by Matthew Page Lieberman, 15 Canal Street, number 15, Medford, Mass., to address the council about community access TV. Name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Matthew Page Lieberman, I live at 15 Canal Street, apartment 15, West Medford. Okay, I have not been here in four and a half years, and since then, there've been some changes. So I want to congratulate Adam Knight for being elected, and Counselor Caraviallo too, as well as Paul, for you being president, and Caraviallo for vice president. It's a really nice change. I'm here tonight because, not actually about community access, but about government access. I'm working on a project in which I'm trying to create transcripts of city meetings, and I would like, because I'm disabled, and that's why I live in 15 Canal Street, so I also have like a lot of sympathy for those who are disabled and are hearing impaired. I also have a bit of sympathy for immigrants who do not speak English as a first language. So I'm creating a project to create transcripts of meetings, and translations of them, and captions of the meetings. As I said, I, you know, I'm disabled, so I don't have a lot of money, but I did, a couple weeks ago, I turned on cable in my house, just so I could get these city council meetings, and I bought a device so I can record them. What I, what I would really like is if we could have the archives of our meetings be available online. Currently, we charge $20 to get an archive of a city council meeting. This is something that I, I don't think we should be charged for. If we go to neighboring Boston, Cambridge, or Somerville, it's completely free, you can go online. I've talked to quite a few people about this, and one person told me, I will not say the person's name, but I was told that it's extremely expensive for these long meetings, and that there are no services that we could really use. I had suggested Made in Medford, and there's also this service called Screencast that the school board uses, but I was told, "It's just too expensive, these videos are too long." Which, from the person who told me this, I was kind of left with the impression this person isn't really knowledgeable about the state of technology today. There's, Amazon charges about three cents for each gigabyte, and Google as well, charges a little bit under three cents for each gigabyte. Meeting of about, our meetings sometimes go for about two hours, that would come out to be about six or seven cents to store a video each month. And then there are, you know, about 20 cents or so for people to download a whole thing. So this is something that would be, you know, it'd be not even like, you know, $20 a year, I think, when we consider this. Now, I'm currently working on archiving these things, oh, I should get back to something. I was told by somebody that YouTube, if we were to upload videos to YouTube, that they just do not accept videos that are that long, but there are people who upload videos to YouTube that are a day and a half long. And if we have interests about, you know, concerns about privacy, there's also a way that we can kind of configure YouTube, so that nobody will be able to see city council meetings, except for people that visit from a city site. You know, we can make that private. So I mean, there are really quite a few options, some are free options, and then some are only a few dollars a year, so we could store archives of city council meetings. So there's, I have much interest in having these archived going forward, as well as archives of the previous meetings. As far as previous meetings, I think that the city should remove the $20 fee for previous meetings, and I would perfectly be willing to volunteer to archive meetings, perhaps 10 a week. It only takes about, you know, 15 minutes to take a DVD and turn it into a file. And if the city has any problems about privacy, you know, because I'm not a city employee, I'm just volunteering, you know, I could lobby the mayor and say, "I will work for a dollar a year."
Matt, can you just step back from the mic a little bit? It's coming over muffled.
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, I did get that feeling. But, I mean, that's, that's about it. You know, I would, I would like, I'm doing a lot of this as a volunteer, and I would just kind of know what, how the city feels about this. I think by, you know, kind of catching up with some neighboring cities, we can perhaps increase citizen interest and participation. I, the reason that I record meetings also is that I go to something that's every Tuesday at 7 o'clock. So I mean, if there are any questions, that's about it. So I mean, if there are any questions, that's about it.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Counselor Marks.
Uh, through you to actually the city clerk. Why, why is it so expensive to get a copy of the meeting? Is it twenty dollars to get a copy of?
Uh, that's what the council set.
So that was set by this council? How far back?
Probably back in, I think, when we started to, uh, yeah, two thousand, maybe.
Two thousand? It, it, what, what would the actual cost be for the actual CD itself and the time?
I think, I think it's mostly the, uh, it's not the actual material. I think it's the time.
Right.
That the person has to invest, because, you know, public records, if you're requesting public records, a lot of times you charge, um, uh, if someone has to copy something, you, you assign that person, uh, to do the copy and the labor, and so that particular person is, is on a public records request, uh, whatever that salary per hour, that's what you kind of, you make your basis on, you know. So a person's making eighteen dollars an hour, it's almost kinda like your eighteen, if it takes an hour, you know. And you gotta remember, this, this precedent was set, I think, um, during VHS originally, because VHS was a slow process, where if you had a two-hour meeting, you actually had to pop in a tape and sit there for two and a half hours, you know, while they transfer it and tape.
It, it just seems, twenty dollars seems a little excessive, uh, for someone to get a copy of, uh, a meeting. Um, al- also, the meetings used to be, uh, copied onto the Channel Three website.
Yeah.
Uh, and they did that for, geez, that's probably say close to a year, and then, as we know, when Channel Three closed, that stopped. Uh, and I'm thinking, Mr. President, if there's a way to get it onto the city website, uh, the council has an area for, uh, the city council that lists all of us and our email addresses and so forth, and why can't we get a copy burned into, uh, the city website of, uh, taped council meetings? It's a great way for, uh, access to residents, and, uh, we always talk, talk about, uh, open government, and, uh, I think that'd serve well for our community. So I would offer that, Mr. President.
On the motion of Counselor Marks to look into uploading, I think is the proper word, uh, our meetings onto the city of Medford's webpage, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Before the roll is called, Counselor Knight.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President, and, um, I've had some conversations with Matthew about this very same endeavor that he's, uh, looking, looking to spearhead, and I think it's a great idea. Um, I too have some concern about the twenty-dollar fee to be charged to get a copy of the tape, and I think that it might make sense, um, for our Rules Committee to take a look, uh, at the fee structure that we use for providing an archived copy of the tape to a member of the general public who seeks, uh, who wishes to have a copy, Mr. President. So, um, I'd like to add that to the paper as well, and refer the issue of, uh, the cost of, uh, a copy of the tape to our Rules Committee for investigation and to maybe establish a fee structure.
Uh, who was that? Counselor Delarussue.
I don't wanna complicate matters at all by sharing this piece of information, but if one were to go to the, uh, town clerk of Winchester for a piece of paper this big with a raised seal, uh, a certified copy of a death certificate, which takes eight minutes for the, uh, secretary to produce for you, costs eighteen dollars.
Thank you. On the motion of Counselor Marks, as well as amended, to send this to the Rules Committee to review by Counselor Knight, all those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. On the motion of Counselor Knight for suspension of Rule thirty-three, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? For the items in the hands of the clerk. Item fourteen dash seven one one, offered by Vice President Caraviallo, please discuss the upcoming street sweeping program and the different types of announcements to the public. I did this earlier, I did not know we had a paper under suspensions, I apologize. Vice President?
Done.
Suspension of the rules, that one rule. Well, yeah, Rule thirty-three is the rule to take different papers out of order. That's the specific rule.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, um, I, I brought this forward to, uh, rather, rather than be reactive, you know, when, uh, after the sweeping's done, everybody's coming down and screaming that they weren't notified, maybe if, if, uh, we brought this up tonight, we'd be a little more proactive and let people know, I mean, there's eighteen different avenues of advertisement for our, our residents to find out about the sweeping program. Uh, the only suggestion I have, uh, in, in, uh, on top of the eighteen different ways is, um, to have the, the police cars drive, uh, in advance of the street sweeping with the, with their sirens on like they've done in the past and, and on the bullhorns. So this way, for the people, 'cause you always get the people say, oh, you know, my, my mother just came over for ten minutes and, you know, the car got towed. So if, 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 if the chief would have the, the officers driving up and down the streets of the, uh, maybe about ten or fifteen minutes before the sweeper, uh, with announcement and, and siren, hopefully that'll alleviate some of the problems too. And if you also, if, if you look back, all the cars that were towed last year were cars of non-methode residents also, Mr. President. So let's hope, uh, this year, uh, there'll be less towing, and then hopefully everyone will get the message, uh, about the program.
Thank you. On the motion of the Vice President Caraviallo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Offered by Counselor Marks, be it resolved that the administration provide the council with the details regarding handicap parking under the new parking plan. Counselor Marks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I received an email, uh, a day or two ago regarding, uh, the mayor's new, uh, parking program, and the woman asked me if, uh, hit the handicap spots that are in our business districts and throughout our cities that are, uh, throughout our city that are on also resident permit parking areas will remain the same, will there be the same number of spots in the community? And, uh, this paper is to ask the administration, uh, where they are the ones that signed the contract, and I'm most familiar with the contract, uh, what is the, um, proposal call for regarding handicap parking, and are there any changes to the number of existing spots, uh, that currently exist in our community, Mr. President?
Counselor Delarussue.
I, I'm grateful for the counselor for, to bring this up, and we just had another presentation by a good citizen regarding this, uh, parking thing. Now that it, it's been signed, we know it's coming, um, one would think that there'd be some, uh, degree of public announcement saying, "We've signed this contract, stay tuned. The second week of November will have a preliminary explanation of what this is gonna be like for the citizens. Don't worry yet. The parking plan will take effect on exit date." We, we've received no information, uh, from those responsible for this, and, uh, I think that's what, uh, the citizens deserve, Mr. President. And if I could amend, uh, if Counselor Marks agrees to it, uh, amend his, uh, resolution that, um, uh, the city administration offer a preliminary, uh, word to the public of announcement and explanation of the parameters of the, uh, parking, uh, policies, uh, so that people can be prepared in fears that, uh, are well-founded can be allayed.
On the motion as amended, Counselor Penta.
Mr. President, I can appreciate both Counselor Marks and Counselor Delarussue in, in their issues, but, uh, once we take Paper fourteen seven oh one off the table and talking about, um, the contract which we were given last week, unfortunately, you weren't here, you were sick, um, I think we can get into, I think we can get into what you're talking about, because there's a way to have this not only explained, but there's some issues in here that I don't believe that the council is aware of, and, um, so I'm glad we did get the contract, and after reviewing it, um, there's some issues we'd like to talk. Um, are we still under the suspension? Thank you, Mr. President. So could we take?
Okay, let's take a vote on this paper.
Okay.
And then we'll take that. On the motion as amended, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. And which, which paper, Counselor?
It's fourteen seven oh one. It's the last, uh, it was tabled last week.
Do you have that paper? Fourteen seven oh one, city council's official position on the pay-to-park contract. On the motion?
Take it off the table.
To take it off the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor Penta.
Mr. President, last week, uh, we were received, 'cause the council had asked for a copy of, of the contract. We were given a, a disc copy, which talked about the five addendums to the contract. Then we were given the hard copy contract, um, and I read the contract twice, and then I went back and I read what was given to us on September tenth, twice. And there's only one, one, two, there's only five words that made a change in the whole contract, under the whole proposal. And it comes under procurement of meters, equipment, and vehicles, and at the very end, it basically says, "The cost of the vehicles and the required accessories, XXXXX." That was in the September ninth. In the December, um, in the, um, October seventh, the cost of the vehicles is going to be provided by the operator. That's the only change in language that we have from September ninth through October seventh and what we got. We were also told, and we were given, um, uh, we did receive as public information provided by the mayor himself, that he sent out a press release on October seventh indicating that he had signed it, and there was one, two, three, four, there were four inclusions in that recommendation page where he indicates, "After deliberating and discussing concerns raised by the business community, the mayor is recommending the following changes to the plan." And the four issues that were raised are nowhere, nowhere to be found in the contract, no by reference or otherwise. So the contract, uh, proposal as preliminary on September tenth, and the final, the final one that was signed by the mayor on, uh, October seventh, does not have those recommendations that he supposedly put in his public press release that, you know, again, it, it, it gives a false representation as to what's going on. Also, Mr. President, we got in this disc there, uh, strike that, let's, let's just go to the contract first. In the contract, there is some representation, and I don't know how this got by anybody, but there's some representation that says, "This contract includes, but is not limited to, the nine hundred and eighty-seven meter spaces that exist at the commencement of this agreement." There is no metered spaces in the city of Medford right now. So how do they determine nine hundred and eighty-seven metered, metered spots? I have absolutely no idea, and I think that needs to be explained further. Also, as you continue on, if you go to, I think, under the, the rent, under the section rent in the contract, it says years eight, nine, and ten. Provided the city exercises its option to extend the agreement, as stated herein, operator shall continue to pay the city the guaranteed rent in continuation of paragraph one A, which is the contract. So if you're looking and you're reading this, is this a seven-year contract or is this a ten-year contract? Because eight, nine, and ten are option years, and as we all know, under option years, under the law, the city's procurement officer has to demonstrate by giving to the council a comparison of not only the figures that we presently have, but the difference between they doing it, X, or the city of Medford doing it. That is not explained in here, other than the fact that eight, nine, and ten appears to be option-type years. So the con, the question is, is this a seven-year contract or is it a ten-year contract? I don't know. These are questions. Also, um, the contract, as you continue on, has some questions as it relates to, once again, liability regarding certain issues. And the liability, uh, questions that present itself, I, I think, directly go to what Counselor Marks was alluding to in the issues of, um, um, handicap accessibility, who's gonna be responsible, and the placing and the locations of the handicap accessi, accessibility. Also, I believe, as Counsel Delarussue just alluded to, I don't think it's the responsibility of this council to explain anything to anybody. This is the mayor's, the mayor's proposal.
Counselor Delarussue.
I, uh, I didn't suggest that the council do an explanation. I sug- suggested that the city administration have the burden and the, uh, responsibility to make a, an explanation.
Oh, I apologize, I misunderstood.
Thank you.
I think you, I thought you meant...
Thank you for the kind apology, Counselor.
Okay.
If anybody's, thank you, Counselor.
Okay, thank you. That's in the contract. I think if you go now to the addendums that were given to us in the video of last week, this is very, very telling. If you go to addendum number, let's do them one at a time, from addendum number three, question is the following. If the city, wait a minute, excuse me, the question is, "How many residential permits are issued annually, and what is the cost per permit?" First answer is, "Between twenty-five to twenty-six-hundred." A thousand is a huge difference. If it was fifteen, twenty, or a hundred, I think that could be understandable. How, how could you have a thousand in, 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 in a discrepancy such as that unless the figures haven't been calculated to be more accurate? I don't know. Also, the real big question, and this was one, Jeanie Martin, this was one that was brought up at the meeting over and over again. Okay, and it says the following, "Will all existing parking signage need to be replaced or will existing parking signage be permitted to remain?" The city's answer, "Existing signage will be permitted to remain. It is in good condition and reflects all the information necessary for notice of parking restrictions." Now, show me a parking identification that even talks about kiosks, never mind the meters, that's existing. We, we don't have it, because they don't exist. And, and I, I don't understand how the city can go forward and make that kind of a thing. "Reflects all the information necessary for notice of parking restrictions." I, I, I just don't understand that. Then you go a little bit step further, one from addendum number two. It says, "Who is responsible for the upkeep of the municipal lots, including sweeping, cleaning, snow plowing, pothole, maintenance, lighting, and restriping if necessary?" City's answer, "The city will continue to maintain the municipal lots." My question is this, when it snows, and we've seen it on numerous occasions, and some of those sidewalks are inundated with mounds and mounds of snow, is the city gonna be responsible to go out there and shovel out the kiosks? Are you gonna tell the business people that you've gotta go out and shovel out the kiosks? I, I don't understand why nobody had the idea to, to think it to this and to get to that point, 'cause that is going to be an issue when there's a serious snowstorm in this city. It's bad enough that the city has to go out there with their plows and do what's necessary to make sure that the streets are open for public safety, but when you're dealing with kiosks throughout the city, and you have almost seventeen, eighteen, hundred of these that are gonna represent parking spaces for, I don't know how many kiosks that they're gonna have, who's gonna be responsible? The city's...
Point of information, Counselor. I don't know if my colleague misspoke, but I, I believe there's only gonna be eighty-five kiosks.
That's, I didn't finish, you know, let me finish.
Okay, you said seventeen hundred.
No, there's seventeen hundred spots for which eighty-five, allegedly eighty-five to eighty-nine kiosks are going to be managing, those eighty-five, those eighty-five metered kiosks will be managing the seventeen or eighteen hundred spots. Get it?
On the street?
Yes.
It's only a thousand spots.
Point of clarification, Counselor Lungo Kern.
Page two of the agreement says there's nine hundred and eighty-seven spots.
Right.
Well, then, you know, sometimes the numbers, these, these, there's something wrong with these numbers then.
Thirty-seven hundred parking permits for business commuters and residential.
Counselor Delarussue, point of information.
I'm wondering if, um, since we've asked for an explanation from a city authority to explain, uh, this program, uh, our discussions might be more fruitful if we had a person here rather than speculate.
Well, we were asked to review this, Counselor Delarussue, last week, and that's what I did. The next question is, "Does the city have any other studies that provide projected revenues for paid parking? And if so, the city, please provide the studies." And the answer is, the city does not have any other studies. This council asked to have its own independent study, and all we were told, it would be more expensive than that, because we got that as part of, quote, "A confidential piece of paper that we weren't supposed to disclose to anyone that had nothing that verified, that verified that the facts that they were presenting were right." Also, in the RFP that went out, the question was asked of them if in fact they would submit or produce two, two references, and two references that were the closest to the city of Medford for which this company, this company, um, Republic from Tennessee worked for, and that's nowhere, I, I don't know where it is, it may be in City Hall someplace, but it would have been nice for the council to have had that as backup to the fact that if mayor thinks this is such a great company and it does a wonderful job, these are the two backups that were asked for and that were acknowledged. Also, I, I, I think that what needs to, needs to be understood is, last week we were also told, strike that, two weeks we were also told, when the President of the Chamber of Commerce were here, that the Chamber, Government Affairs Committee, and the Chamber's Board of Directors presented to the mayor that they were in favor of this pay-to-park program. The letter dated September twenty-six, two thousand and fourteen by the President, Mr. White, in a four-page, five-page, I mean, five paragraph, doesn't indicate that at all. It indicates of their interest in it, but it indicates very clearly, "We also recognize that from business center to business center, our members have different parking needs and varying concerns with the enforcement plan. We would like to provide a forum for our members to voice their concerns. It is important that the chamber be involved with any additional planning or public meetings in distributing such information so that we can..." in distributing such information so that we can serve our members appropriately. That letter is not an endorsement of a pay-to-park program.
Point of information, Counselor Knight.
I believe the letter that Counselor Penta refers to was sent to the administration prior to the recommendations being made that the Counselor referred to at the beginning of his soliloquy.
Thank you, Counselor.
My answer to that is, the letter that was sent to the administration by Mr. White, Mr. Carl, and Ms. Janet Donnelly never was presented to the entire membership, and this was presented on September 26th. So as Mr. White indicated when he was at that forum, that the Government Affairs Committee and the Board of Directors endorsed the pay-to-park program. The pay-to-park program wasn't even signed. So that's number one. Number two, it's quite obvious that this coincides to the commentary that was represented in the Medford transcript, that the business community and the business squares are concerned and they have varying indifference of opinions. Now, you can agree or disagree with what's going on because the commentary subsequent to that, which was issued on October 7th by the mayor of this community, says he met with the chamber and they agreed, and they come up with these four recommendations. These aren't four inclusions in the contract. These are only recommendations. And if they're only recommendations, and they're not going to be effective because the council, strike that, because the contract in and of itself says, that's it, this is the final terminology. I don't know how a recommendation can come into play, number one. And number two, if it's not included in the contract and even not even incorporated by reference, that's number one. It doesn't even talk about how many people even bid for the contract. Speaking with folks who are professional in public bidding contracts here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we were led to believe in our executive session on May 20th that we had to choose this one particular individual because that's what the mayor was recommending at the time. But we had three legitimate people who had submitted to the RFP. We never got those figures from the three people in their bidding process to make an intelligent decision, to make the final decision or make the decision who we're going to take. So this was only...
Point of information, Counselor Knight.
I do believe, if I recall correctly, that the only matter that was before the council that evening is whether or not the council was going to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract that would be 10 years in length. The actual contracted entity was not up for discussion, that was not within our purview that evening.
I'm going to respectfully disagree with my colleagues because the meeting did take place with the fact that we were going to be informed as to where we were going on the RFP. Ms. Louise Miller was there, and unfortunately, she didn't have an opportunity to speak, why they didn't let her speak. But there were three people who submitted bids. The mayor decided to choose only one. The mayor's request to the council was at that point in time, do we go forward with this one? I needed your opinion on that. So none of us had any opportunity, any opportunity to even understand who the other two people were, if they were legitimate because they satisfied the RFP that the city sent out. You know, if this is going to be an open and transparent process and we're supposed to get the biggest bang for our buck, who knows that maybe one of the other two that we, wasn't chosen or didn't submit, couldn't given us, couldn't given a better deal or at least offered something for some of us to say, well, wait a minute, let's take a comparison. That for which we never even had the opportunity, didn't even have the opportunity to getting one from the city. You know, how do you turn around and hand someone on October 7th to the council, the contract that was signed, have a press release go out that day, which is exactly the same thing that was given to us on September 10th, minusing out five words, but identifies allegedly metered spots in the city that we have? There is not one metered spot in the city of Medford. And that would be crucial to this, to this contract because if it's a metered spot, it needs to be identified. And having no metered spots to be identified tells me, or at least reads it, I'm not the lawyer, we have lawyers on the council here, that basically would tell you if it's an unidentifiable, unidentifiable location, as stated in here, to be identified, well, that presents a difference of opinion as to what are we signing in for and what are we getting? But more importantly, the fact of kiosks, snows, responsibility, you know, is it 987? Is it, you know, 2,600 or 2,500 permanent parking stickers? How many actually is it going to be? Who's going to maintain the parking lot? For example, the parking lot up on Boston Avenue, 90% of that parking lot, even though the city has its signs, is privately owned. So what are they going to do with that? Put kiosks on somebody's privately-owned property? I got calls this week from folks to want to know, do our business people, and I won't mention their names, who's exempt and who isn't exempt? Because there are a lot of commercial pieces of property in this city that people are going to want to know.
Point of clarification, Counselor Longo Kern.
Thank you, President Camusso. Just on that question, I think that was one of your first questions. We were told in our subcommittee meetings that any clearly marked spot that is currently in the city of Medford is going to be a spot that's going to be metered. They're not creating new spots, they're not taking away any that are clearly marked. But if you have a clearly marked spot in one of our squares or downtowns, districts, those are the ones that are going to be metered.
But to get them metered, they need to be identified. This contract says they are already identified. They're not identified. We do not have one metered spot here in the city of Medford.
But clearly marked, if it has a sign, 15 minutes, two hours, half hour, anything that's clearly marked as a parking spot within the city of Medford is going to be metered.
Then maybe the terminology should have been changed. Instead of metered spots, identified spots, identifiable spots, as city of Medford spots. You know, contracts are usually very specific, and it's going to be very specific because they're going to be basing their money and their profit on a lot of the specifics that are in this contract. And with that being said, Mr. President, I just really think that, especially with that press release that we know by the mayor last week, I mean, none of us can answer the question because, you know, it can't be factified, it can't be found in the contract and even by reference, anything subsequent to that could be written. Sure, it does say in here that the traffic commission will be the group of individuals who's going to set the fees and do whatever it has to do, and that the city administration basically is going to be the reviewing authority for appeals, and they're not going to do that. And it talks about trying to employ 50% Medford people to be part of the program and blah, 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 and all of that. But there are certain specifics in here that are just, that are just left out there, you know, and maybe it would have been nice if we got all of this information before we, anything was signed, so we could have a full-blown discussion, and taxpayers and ratepayers and business folks throughout the entire community would have had an opportunity. You know, this has been hanging around since 2009, Mr. President. This was a quick rush from September 9th to October 7th. And that's kind of like, you really question, what was the quick rush since you've been waiting five years to discuss this? Even if it took another four, five, or six months, who cares? Eventually, we know it's going to come. Because this council asked for traffic enforcement, not revenue enhancement, traffic enforcement, and there is a big difference.
Counselor Longo Kern.
I thank you, Counselor Camusso. I just beg to differ to a point because this council, I think all seven of us have discussed the possibility for income that is out there. I think each counselor has discussed how much money Somerville brings in, how much money Cambridge brings in, and how much the city of Medford is missing out on that opportunity. I believe I've spoke about it, Counselor Carviallo, I mean, all of my colleagues have. So we knew this was going to be a revenue-generating contract. I mean, I don't know how to get around, how anybody can get around that.
Mr. President, there's other councils on it. We'll be back to you, Counselor. Counselor Penta.
Just to respond back to Counselor Longo Kern, you know, we never engaged in a revenue-enhancement program to find out just how much money that could bring in. And now, once folks out of towners realize that they're not going to be able to stay here and park here all day long, that money that you'd think you would be getting and generating from those folks, that's not going to exist because they're not going to come here anymore. So you're basically dealing with you're in town and maybe every now and then out of town. But when you think of what's going on, your water bill just goes up, your food tax, your gasoline tax, and now, this past week, if you all read the newspapers and understood that the electric company will be raising your electric rates 37% this winter for heat, for whatever was going on, how much more can you keep banging away and telling the taxpayer, you're going to pay for more and more and more? If we had a very simple program that recognized, let's start off slow, let's start with an enforcement program, I don't think, let me just cut this, I don't think anybody would argue the fact that if you wanted to put meters of kiosks in parking lots, that isn't it. It's the on-street parking, and that's the issue that's presenting itself. And because of that, you have to realize, all these other taxes and these fees that people are paying, it's just going to end. It's almost like looking at some of the questions that are on the ballot. You know, they want to force you into a forced deposit on certain bottles, and every five years it'll just go up automatically. I mean, how much, you're going to keep telling the people, you're going to have to pay for something with no question? Same thing with the gas tax. You're not going to be able to question because it's just going to be automatic. People have a right to discuss these issues and to know how they have been determined. That's why we're the legislative body here. And that's why we have, and we should have had that right, to make the vote, not the vote that was okay in May to make the mayor go out and negotiate, but the council should have had that final vote to say whether we're on board or not on board. That's where the mayor, I believe, usurped his authority, went forward, and he took that May 20th vote as for him to go forward and do that. And that was not my intention for vote, and it was as clear as a bell, if you watch the minutes of the meeting of May 20th and as recorded in the minutes as well.
The vote that was taken is similar to the trash contract and other contracts that are beyond a three-year period that needs this council's approval to negotiate. And the only negotiating authority under this former government is the current sitting mayor, who happens to be Michael McGlynn.
On the trash contract, Mr. President, with due respect, the trash contract can be signed by the executive authority, you didn't need a legislative body for that. It's one of the very...
Yes, we... Counselor?
It's one of the very rare contracts that can be signed like that.
Absolutely. But I'm going to refresh your memory. You were sitting on this council when the city administration came to this council to do an extended contract. If it's over that threshold, you need to get the council's approval. Counselor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I don't want anyone else in that viewing audience to believe that the meters are where we're going to gain a lion's share of our revenue. If you look at the revenue calculations that were presented to us, ticketing will derive 2/3 of the revenue. So it's not the meters that are driving the revenue, it's the ticketing that's driving the revenue. And, you know, I agree with my council colleague, Counselor Penta. When we asked, when I say we, it was us and the Chamber of Commerce and residents of this community asked for enforcement, our vision was to enforce existing signage throughout the community. That was the vision that was out there. And then eventually, if you wanted to expand the program, you know, we refer to Somerville all the time, their program has been in existence for 30 years and has been tweaked and revised over 30 years. We're starting off with a program that they want, the administration wants to be comparable to a program that's been in existence for 30 years. So we're going from nothing to something. It's like going from 0 to 50 in a matter of minutes in this community. And I think there lies the problem, Mr. President. I would ask, because I don't think a lot of people in this community are aware of the revenue calculations, that if we can get a revenue comparison, Mr. President, on right now, if you want to feed the meter, it's a dollar for an hour, it's 25 cents for every 15 minutes. If we were to lower that to 50 cents for an hour, what would the revenue projections be based on that? If we also were to look at, as Mr. Pompeo mentioned, Stephen Pompeo from Pompeo Insurance in West Medford, that we provide free parking citywide for the first 15 minutes or first half hour, how would that impact the revenue? And if we can get a comparison on that? Because if we're looking at ticketing driving 2/3 of the revenue, then if we were to provide 15-minute free parking citywide, the first 15 minutes, so if you want to run in and get a sandwich, or if you want to run in and get the newspaper, or pay a bill at a store, whatever you might want to do, would cover a lot of people the first 15 minutes. And in my opinion, based on the revenue calculations that I saw, that would not hamper revenue at all. And it would provide a service to everyone in this community, it would address the business owners throughout the community, Mr. President, that have concern with it, and I think it makes sense. So I would ask my council colleague if we can amend his paper or add this, that a revenue calculation be done to compare parking for 50 cents for one hour as opposed to $1 for one hour and first 15 minutes free citywide. How would that impact the proposal, Mr. President? Cost analysis comparison, I think, would be helpful. And just my last point, Mr. President. You know, we all push for this and, you know, you know, we can be critical and so forth, and something needed to be done, and as I stated from the top, I'm not in support of a lot of these initiatives. But I think a telltale sign, Mr. President, a telltale sign is, last week, the mayor had a state of the city speech before the Chamber of Commerce. And during his speech, he did not mention one word about parking enforcement, one of the biggest things to hit businesses in the last 50 years in this community. He did not make one mention of it. And that, to me, is a telltale sign of this administration and the fact that this administration, I don't even think, supports the plan, Mr. President. And what we're going to see when this plan finally gets implemented, and I agree with Counselor Delarussue, there's not enough notification now, there should be public hearings and so forth, that when this program eventually hits, people in this community are going to be shocked. They're going to be shocked, Mr. President, and no matter what we do for the first couple of weeks and give out fake tickets and so forth, people are going to be shocked because the way of doing, the way of life in this community, the way of doing business in this community is going to be altered, in my opinion, negatively. And I think this should have been addressed in a different manner, Mr. President. It could have been addressed in-house, and it could have been much more thoughtful to take into consideration how this community works and the way of life in this community, and then we could have proceeded from there, Mr. President.
Thank you. On that motion, Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, as I understand it, the motion before us right now is from Counselor Delarussue, which would be to request that info sessions be held, as I understand it correctly, Counselor, and as well as cost comparison be conducted regarding 15 minutes free and 50 cents for the first hour, is that correct, Counselor Marks?
Compared to the dollar, right.
Compared to the dollar.
No free parking.
Compared to what the contract speaks to right now. Mr. President, I don't have a problem with either one of these amendments to the resolution. I think that if in fact we were going to request the Traffic and the Parking Commission to hold an info session relative to the parking enforcement program, that they would do such and hold meetings in each business district to make it easy for the business operators to come there, to have less of an impact on their day-to-day operations, and to allow everybody an opportunity to understand what's actually going to be unveiled.
Okay, on the motion, Counselor Penta.
Did you want to speak, Jeanie?
Let her go first.
Mr. Carviallo.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Hi, Jean Martin, Ten Coming Street. I just want to reiterate that you can't look at this parking enforcement program in isolation from the greater city. And when you start ticketing in the residential areas that have permit parking, guess what? Where are those cars going to go? They're going to go into the next streets. Same thing's going to happen in the business districts, especially in West Medford, if you start ticketing or having signs, those side streets are going to get filled up. In Haynes Square, same thing's going to happen, side streets are going to get filled up with cars, and they're going to walk down to the store because they don't want to pay or whatever. But I do agree with you, Mr. Marks, I think the free 15 minutes, a half an hour, that's fine, but it's already signed in the contract. So believe me, you're going to hear from the people. When this thing goes in, you're going to see them here. They will be here, and they will be talking to you about the problems. So you don't have to worry about that. But again, I just want the money from the ticketing that's going to go on in West Medford Square or Medford Square or Haynes Square to go towards new signage because there's no reason why we shouldn't have regular sweeping. Why should we have to have cops and bullhorns? We should just have signs that say, you know, "Street sweeping twice a year, whatever, here's the time, here's the date." Why don't we have a uniform system for snow emergencies and whatnot? So I think that you can't look at it in isolation. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, Counselor Penta, earlier you brought up parking and who's going to be shoveling, designated snow emergencies, there's no on-street parking on any of these major arteries already, so that issue is moot. Counselor Penta.
I just, a few other comments. First of all, Counselor Knight, you just alluded to the fact of maybe having meetings in these separate district areas. I mean, the council asked for that, and again...
The info session, the plan's going to be unveiled.
I understand the info session, but it's all after the fact. It would have been nice to have it ahead of time. And Counselor Marks, you alluded to the fact that the mayor gave his state-of-the-art speech or whatever, sponsored by the chamber, correct? Was it the chamber, Rick's?
I was going to...
But it's the chamber, it was the chamber's meeting, correct?
It's an annual meeting...
The annual meeting that the chamber had.
One at a time, please. Counselor Carviallo was asked a question, Vice President.
It's an annual meeting of the chamber.
Well, I guess what appears to be now really preposterous, I never thought of it until you just said it. The chamber, who allegedly had so much input into... The chamber, who allegedly had so much input into this thing, didn't even get an ounce of recognition for being part and parcel of a new program that was gonna be taking place. I guarantee you, there wasn't even a mention about the Craddock Bridge.
I was not there.
Well, I guarantee it, because from people that were there, there was no mention of the Craddock Bridge. You know, that's the sad part about it. If we're gonna be talking about businesses in this city and how they're going to be affected, and the people that are supposed to be representing them, and the leaders of those businesses, and nothing takes place as said, where are we going with all of this? You can have all the meetings you want. You can tell the mayor to do this and that. He signed it. This is the mayor's plan, lock, stock, and barrel. Whether the council agreed in part, or in total, or 100, or 90, that's not the point. This all started off as a small little revenue... Strike that. A small little enforcement. An enforcement appetite to possibly get the people back on track. Possibly, and I think it was you, Counselor Camuso, who asked the question. Maybe the people coming and parking on Place St. Road from Winchester, can we charge out-of-towners more than can we charge in-towners? And we waited to get an answer on that. And that would've been a great help if we could do it. No, but that would be a great help if we could do it with a great disparity in the cost. Maybe charge someone $500, $600, you know, to park in Medford rather than a Medford resident parking even the $100. And that's a bargain, too. So, you know, you can go to all these little side streets and talk to the people. They'll tell you. They have all these cars parked in there. They see people go and take the train. Who goes and takes the bus? If you don't have resident parking, it's still not gonna work because people are gonna be still parking in those particular neighborhoods. The mayor can send out all the press releases he wants. Contract that doesn't have it. Kiosk which are issues and concerns.
The question has been called. Vice President Carviallo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, if we can sit here all night and go back and forth, speculate on what's in, what's not in, why don't we just have a council hall meeting with the mayor so we can get the questions that we have answered and go from there? Because everything we're talking about tonight is just speculation and guessing.
Meeting should be a public one.
Well, the council hall meeting is a public one.
All council meetings are public meetings.
It is a public meeting. Rather than go here and guessing what's good, what's not good, where the parking spots are and aren't, I make a recommendation that you ask the mayor for a council hall meeting to discuss this issue. Council the whole, well, I would like to have a council... My resolve is council hall. If you wanna make it a public meeting, that's up to you. But I'd like to have a council hall with the mayor so we, as our seven councils, can ask the questions that we have and hopefully they get resolved. Then, again, I'm gonna stick to my issue that I made earlier, that all revenue that's derived from this parking go toward the police station. If it's gonna generate the number that these people say it is, let's take that money and put it toward the police station so we don't have to wait seven years to get a station.
Point of information, Counselor Marks.
That's a great suggestion, but unfortunately, the mayor already allocated $250,000 back to the business districts. So your resolution is moot right now. Well, you said all revenue. You already allocated money, so that's why we need it to be at the table when this took place.
If it's gonna generate over $1 million a year, less than $200,000...
I agree with you. I'm in agreement with you.
Take that money, put it toward the police station. Rather than wait seven years for us to take out a bond for the police station. They'll at least pay the bonds.
Counselor Knight?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. In looking at the issue, there is a number of questions that need to be answered. A number of questions should be answered. And as such, we have a subcommittee structure that's in place. And I think that's the appropriate area, appropriate arena for us to get these questions answered, Mr. President. So, you know, I wholeheartedly support Counselor Carviallo's idea to keep this in either the committee or the hall, the committee in transportation, to get these questions answered. Once we get the questions answered, then we'll be more informed, and then we can move forward. But the underlying paper that's before us is the council's official position on paid-up park. Now, we have a series of amendments that have been added to that. We've asked a number of questions. I really think the appropriate place to ask these questions would be in committee so that we all have the answers, and then we can all make an informed decision as to what direction we, as a council, wanna move. Then why is the paper on the table? Well, if there's no direction for us to move, then why are we having the... I don't think anybody in this table is precluding them from doing that, Counselor. Exactly.
Mr. Clerk, if you could read the amendment back?
Parking enforcement plan, and all revenues going forward go to the police station and refer to the paper, refer to the committee hall.
Counselor Penta?
Well, I'm gonna put my resolve on the table, and on my commentaries. Number one, I wanna know who's gonna be responsible for the kiosk during the snowstorm. Well, we might as well go through them if we're gonna make these all amendments.
Are you making amendments?
Yeah, I'm making the amendments now.
Well, I think these are all questions, these are all questions that can be answered at the council of the hall meeting. That's right. Refer the entire paper to the council of the hall.
The contract and the amendments that were given to us in the dish.
Rather than one question at a time.
Addendums, not amendments, addendums. There is a difference.
Motion is that we refer all addendums. Motion by Counselor Marks for approval. All in favor?
No, wait a minute, wait a minute. One last thing.
One last thing.
If we're referring all of that, then we refer the mayor's press release, which he identifies four specific issues that are not found in the contract. How are they found in the... How does the intent to implement these in the contract?
I mean, to let you know how the paper works, it gets referred to committee hall.
No, no, no. This is gonna be part of it.
Right, but he won't see this, any of these things, until you get to the committee of the hall.
No, no, you're gonna be sending him the request for the committee of the hall. And also...
No, no, no. This council calls committee of the halls. The mayor doesn't call committee of the halls.
I understand that.
You just said, send him a request for the committee of the hall.
Yeah, but the paper itself gets referred to the committee.
The paper either goes, if I may, Mr. ... The paper's either going to the mayor or to the committee of the hall. Whatever the council wishes. Point of clarification, Counselor Knight?
Well, point of order, rather. I think it might make more sense, instead of us throwing questions at the city clerk to have him jot down, that we set a committee of the hall meeting. We set a deadline for us to actually email the questions that we want answered to the city clerk. The city clerk can put them together in a packet for us if he's, you know, so willing. And we can send that packet to the mayor's office. We can get the answers that we want answered. We can call the people in front of us to clarify these questions at the committee of the hall meeting, and then we can move forward as a body.
So the motion to send all papers and questions to the committee of the hall?
Yes.
And a roll call has been requested.
But on the motion, to also include the mayor's October 7th press release, where he identifies four specifics recommendations. Have him explain how this is part of the contract.
We will do that at the committee of the hall, then.
No, no, but he has to have the paper so he knows.
I don't have the mayor's press release.
Well, we'll give you a copy.
All right, so you wanna refer the mayor's press release that he has...
With his four recommendations.
And four recommendations.
Name an address for the record.
Anthony Antonio Yale Street, number 12. Just a couple of comments on the parking enforcement program, revenue enforcement, revenue program. I was never in favor of going out to a third party, a subcontractor, to do this for the city of Medford. I always felt very strongly that we were capable enough to do it here. I always felt that within the city of Medford, this would've been handled with a lot of respect for the citizens and the store owners in this city, and with common sense. And I see that this is somewhat lacking in this particular contract. I am still waiting, unless I missed it somewhere along the line, for the analysis between in-house versus outside contracting as far as the cost analysis on that. I think that in implementation of a parking program where we're gonna capitalize a particular company with equipment, and I don't mean that we're gonna pay for the equipment, but it's a lot easier to get into a contract than it is to get out of a contract. And if this thing is not working properly, and if this thing is not realizing the money that we think that we're going to get, how do you get out of the contract? And you've brought up a very good point. There's been snow on curbs and on the sidewalks until end of March. I can't understand how people that are handicapped, people that have elderly people like myself, you know, I mean, really, how are you gonna get up and put the money in the slot, put the money in the kiosk? That's an important part. You've got to clean these parking lots, and you've got to clean the sidewalks. We need the people to do that.
Point of information, Vice President Carviallo.
Thank you. Maybe this is an incentive for the city to go out there and now plow all these spots out because obviously, this company's gonna say, hey, we're not making any money here because all the spots are plowed in. So maybe this is the incentive to plow the sidewalks and to plow all the parking spots out. Because if there's nowhere to park, then there's not gonna be parking revenue.
And I agree, and I just want the...
And what if you become elderly?
I feel like it. No, but I mean, I just want it to work right, and I want it to benefit everybody in the city. And I want it to benefit the people that are coming into the city to patronize the shops and the schools and whatnot.
But maybe, as you say, maybe Republic will get out there on them now to get it done.
Well, it should, and I hope that it is done. It is done, because it's an important part of it. Good luck.
Thank you. On the motion to send the entire paper to the committee of the hall, roll call has been requested.
Vice President Carviallo?
Yes.
Counselor Delarussue? Counselor Knight?
Yes.
Counselor Longkern?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Penta? President Camuso?
No. By a vote of six in the affirmative, one no. The paper passes. Next item, 14-719, offered by Counselor Marks. Be it resolved that the South Medford Neighborhood Safety Walk be discussed. Counselor Marks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last Friday, October 17th, members of the South Medford residents together, better known as S-M-O-T-O, organized a public safety walk within their neighborhood. I just would like to thank Jim Silva, who is the organizer slash founder of S-M-O-T-O. And as we all know, behind this rail and many residents of South Medford, that particular group has been instrumental in getting many initiatives from public safety to streets and sidewalks and a host of issues accomplished through togetherness and through unity. And on last Friday, Mr. President, there was roughly 30 residents that showed up for the walk. The walk was roughly a mile and a half through many streets in South Medford, starting from the Yale Street parking lot and ending up at the Columbus School and back to the South Medford Business District. The meeting was attended by Chief Sacco, who was instrumental and lent his expertise on many of the issues that were raised that night by residents that joined the walk. We were also joined by several police officers who were assigned to the night shift in the South Medford neighborhood area so residents could see who's actually patrolling the streets, meet them and say hi to them, and see a familiar face, which was nice. I attended the walk along with Councilors Carviallo and Counselor Delarussue. As I mentioned at the beginning, the issues that were raised were public safety in nature. There were issues of concern with speeding on our streets. There was issues of break-ins. There were issues of different activity, drug activity, criminal activity, taking place on our streets, Mr. President. The talk also went not only to public safety, but there was issues regarding DPW, the streetlights, many streetlights that were either dim or out altogether, which was brought up before this council several weeks back to improve lighting in that particular area. We witnessed a number of double poles up and down the streets that we took and wrote notes on. There were also many, many tree stumps that still strewn throughout the sidewalks in South Medford. And again, we witnessed firsthand traversing the sidewalks with curbs that are raised higher than the sidewalk or a little lower than the sidewalk, which is a trip and hazard. We witnessed streets that were in awful deplorable condition to walk on and to drive on, Mr. President. And at that meeting, we took down a list of, which you would refer to as a punch list, of issues that needed to be addressed. This is not a solve-all by any means, but a way of addressing individual needs from residents that showed up and neighborhood concerns that were eared to Chief Sacco. Tonight, I'd like to go through some of the punch list. I know we have residents from South Medford here that would like to also speak. And in addition to the punch list, which I'm gonna go through just briefly, and the residents can speak on it, I would like to personally propose, Mr. President, where this walk was such a success, and I think my colleagues would agree with me, and the neighbors would also agree, that we imitate this particular safety walk in other sections of the community. And I reached out to Chief Sacco already, and he said he'd be willing to do that, Mr. President. I also mentioned to Chief Sacco that it was great to have the chief there, but because the issues involved other department heads also, and I didn't want the chief to be, you know, wearing too many hats, that we also invite for these particular walkthroughs in different neighborhoods, the police chief, the DPW commissioner, code enforcement, and the Board of Health. I think that probably covers the gambit of issues that were raised. And if anyone would like to invite anyone else, the chief so far, Sacco, said he was on board. And I would like to implement these through, Mr. President. And the one thing I'd like to try is that the city has the reverse 911. It's a great tool, as we all know. We receive two or three calls a week now in notifying residents on what's going on, different things in the community. And I would ask for the administration, in cooperation with this council, to set up these particular meetings because we can use the reverse 911 to contact neighborhoods. So if we wanted to, in a month from now, say we wanna contact the Haynes Square area and do a walkthrough in that particular area, it would literally take a five-minute phone call that's done by the police department to send out thousands of phone calls notifying residents. I think it's probably the most effective way of reaching everyone in the community that would have an interest. And I would ask, Mr. President, that we establish neighborhood safety walks in every segment and every section of this community with the heads of the different departments, and that be done by a reverse 911 call. And if we want, we can meet with the administration to figure out a process to set this up. But in my opinion, until you walk the street, until you hear from the neighbors... I mean, we all get phone calls and emails, but it's really an eye-opener when you actually walk the street and you see the different things and you feel it. You know, I don't live in the South Medford neighborhood. And you know what? When you go down there and walk the streets, it's very different. You know, I've been in my neighborhood a lot, and I traverse the city. But until you actually get into the neighborhood, I think you feel the very foundation of what that neighborhood is all about and hear from the residents firsthand on what their plight is and what they're going through, and their issues of concern. And I heard from several residents, which is troubling, Mr. President, that night, that people are looking to move out of the community because they're disappointed with the lack of response from the city when they call on an issue. Because they're disappointed that nothing seems to take place. Because they're disappointed that nothing seems to take place. And that's very troubling to me, and I think it's something that we as a community have to work on and different initiatives as Counselor Longo offered with the 311 program and other initiatives to involve the community in a direct link into the city. But if you would just indulge me, Mr. President, I'd like to just walk through the list briefly. And I was hoping that we as a council, some of these might be initiatives that we can push forward and other initiatives maybe the SMOTTO group will have to follow up and follow through with. But the first punch list was an issue with the curb cut at the corner of Yale and Main Street. As we all know, I think we've all received phone calls from residents and so forth, and this has been an issue of contention. There's trucks that are going over the curb, which is now a curb cut, an extended curb cut, I might add, and they hang out onto the sidewalk. It poses a real public safety concern. I'm not sure, and the chief agreed, how this took place, when it took place, who approved it. There seems to be no record around of this particular curb cut. But the recommendation that I'm making tonight based on SMOTTO's recommendation is that we close the curb cut at the corner of Yale and Main to prevent cars and trucks from parking next to the building. So that would be the first one, Mr. President. And I would hope that we as a council can send that to the Traffic Commission with support of the council to close off that curb cut in regards to public safety for the neighbors of that particular area. The second one, well, the second one was the ballards, to install ballards on Main and Harvard Street. And as we all know, that's on the other end of where the Oasis Bakery is. That also has been an issue. We were there last Friday night, and when we were crossing the street, some of us had to jump out of the way because there were cars coming up onto the sidewalk or backing out trying to get off the sidewalk, and it really was a public safety concern. So the second request, and we can send this to also the Traffic Commission and the DPW, is to install ballards at the corner of Harvard and Main, next to and along that corner where the Oasis Bakery is, Mr. President. Another issue is the, in front of the Oasis, there's a bus stop that takes up several spots. Many residents of the community thought it would be a great idea if we were able to move the bus stop. I know it's highly used. Some of the residents say, you know what, we really use this. And we said, we're not going to eliminate it, we're just going to shift it slightly. And we're going to shift it to the north corner of Harvard Street. So right now, it's in front of the Oasis Restaurant. We're going to shift it to the north side where the Dry Cleaner and the Yoga Establishment is. And that will open up the section for delivery trucks, which currently is one of the major problems in that area. There's nowhere for delivery trucks to park. So they're going up onto the sidewalks parking, and we witnessed it firsthand, and the residents witnessed it on a daily basis. And it's just a matter of time, honestly, before there's a public safety concern or death in that area, and I hope we can prevent that, Mr. President. So my suggestion would be to move the bus stop from its current location, which would be a vote of this council, of the Oasis, which is in front of Oasis, and put it on the north side of Harvard in front of the Dry Cleaners and the Yoga Place. And in my opinion, that would lend itself to an area where trucks can park for delivery and also keep the bus stop in a reasonable manner. It's only maybe 30 feet or 40 feet from its existing stop. So I would ask that, Mr. President. The next one is to designate times for the loading zones. It's done in other communities. If we can have maybe loading zones between the hours of, whatever it might be, nine and 10 in the morning, or pick a particular time because now trucks are coming, as we heard from residents, they're coming at 11 o'clock at night, they're coming at 6:00 in the morning. And when you hear the beeps and the backup noises that go on when trucks back up, it's a disturbance to the neighborhood. So the neighborhood would like to designate times for loading zone in that particular section that I just referred to, which is hopefully the new truck delivery section, Mr. President. The pole, pole number 513, in front of Arthur's Bakery, looks like it has a bird nest inside. It's completely dim, and as we all know, Arthur's Bakery is one of the central businesses on Main Street, and that light needs to be fixed immediately in the interest of public safety. So I would hope that we could send that to the head of Wires, Mr. President, as a recommendation from this council to have that light fixed immediately. Also, and I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing the café right, Dea, which is at the corner of Alexander and Main Street, they own the first, I think it's four or five feet, like all the businesses there, of sidewalk in front of their establishment, and they have an area which is used for eating, which I think we all agree with, it's a nice addition to the area. But they built a little curbing around their eatery, where you would eat on the sidewalk. And if you go there at night, it's a trip and hazard. There's no cording off right now. It's not fenced off at all. It's just the curbing. They may be in the process of putting that there, but that definitely needs to be looked at. And as a council, maybe we can have the administration or compliance or someone send an email or a letter to this particular establishment about-
Point of information, Counselor Delarussue.
That was a result of gradation changes in the sidewalks due to the repairs on Alexander Avenue. The owner of the building is aware of it, and there's a plan under effect to make a remedy of that situation that was created because of the change of gradation of the sidewalk.
That's very important. Thank you, Counselor. So maybe if we can get an update for the area residents on what's going to happen, there must be a plan on file with the city, and that's good news that it's being reviewed. Also, the sidewalk in front of La Cacha's Bakery, we stopped there. It is completely crumbling and needs to be paved over in the interest of public safety. The trimming of bushes and improved lighting at Tufts Park entrance is a public safety concern. The bushes are overgrown and high, and it lends itself for difficulty area to traverse. And also, when we're up at Columbus Park, the walkway at Columbus Park has period lighting like in the square, and many of the light fixtures are tarnishing and turning yellow, and they're not letting off enough light, and it's very dark in that particular area. So I would ask, Mr. President, we have members of SMOTTO and the neighborhood, South Medford Neighborhood, they'd like to come up and speak. And again, I'd like to thank all the neighbors and Jim Silva in particular for setting this up and for organizing it, Mr. President.
Vice President Caraviallo, and then the esteemed gentleman and young lady at the podium.
I'll yield to the guests first.
Name and address for the records, please, one at a time.
Anita Antonio, 14 Yale Street.
Jim Silva, 115 Yale Street.
I'd like to thank Jim for putting this together and the piece of paper you have tonight, the outline. He organized this at the initiation, I think originally of Ann Fretz and then Jim took the rest of the way. I'd like to thank the chief. He was terrific that evening. He listened to us all. City Councilors Delarussue, Caraviallo, and Marks came with us. It was great cardiovascular exercise. It was a wonderful evening. It was just right temperature-wise, so we were able to walk and actually see. I'm not going to repeat all of what Counselor Marks said because he hit all the high points, but once you do walk it, you see it, and it's much easier to understand what the problems are when you're confronted with them by experiencing it yourself, whether it's a crumbling sidewalk or cars overhanging the sidewalk. And it was quite a success. We had quite a number of people as well, so it worked out well. With all of these punchless points, we haven't left the business owners out in limbo. There is a flexibility to this, and when we asked for the curb closure and no cars or trucks being parked next to buildings overhanging or traversing sidewalks, our thought was to create a loading zone slash delivery vehicle area expressly for the businesses who use it most frequently. I understand that you can't always get provisions at the same time from a company. There has to be some flexibility, and if we do establish a loading zone where that bus stop was, that may lend itself to solving the problem for us or at least ameliorating it. And then for the owners of the businesses who are spending eight to 10 hours there, we have the parking lot on Yale Street. It was in part built for their benefit, and it would be great if they took their cars, whether they're going to have a fee for it or not. I don't even know whether there's a fee structure now for commercial vehicles in that public lot. But to leave their cars and their vans there, keep the sidewalks clear, and it's a public safety issue at the bottom of it. I mean, if we can resolve that, it would be great. That really is one that needs to be done because particularly on Yale, and then again with Oasis, I mean, neither one of them should be parking where pedestrians are trying to traverse the sidewalk, and you're putting pedestrians in danger.
Point of information, Mr. President?
Point of information, Counselor Delarussue.
But, and I say this with all due respects, isn't every driveway that crosses every sidewalk interacting with the place that people walk?
It is, but these cars are sticking out onto the sidewalk, and it's a safety issue.
Yes.
And in the case of Oasis, they're driving over handicap access. I mean, we're not, it's just a matter of walking down the street after parking your car at the Yale Street lot and allowing for someplace on Main Street for those delivery vehicles to park rather than having them park up against the building and having to go over the sidewalk or over the handicap access or overhanging. I mean, I think it's a, you know, fairly fair solution, but, you know, we're not leaving them empty-handed by any means.
Aesthetically, having cars on a sidewalk, it's not a very nice sort of view when people are coming down the street or visiting you, and there are cars parked all over the sidewalk.
I'm not in favor of cars being parked on the sidewalk at all. That wasn't my point.
Well, yeah, in the winter in particular, it's very dicey to come down Yale toward Main and try and make your way around vans that are hanging out into the, I mean, it would resolve that issue, and maybe something nice could be put there instead, you know, some potted plants, green space, something. And yet, there's still, we don't want to put them out of business by any means. And I think they would be glad to have a place on Main Street where they can just leave the store, get in the car, and deliver the takeout. And by the same token, the big trucks that deliver to be able to pull up in front of the, on Main Street in front of the businesses and deliver that way, whether it's Bocelli's across the street or Oasis or Mays, you know, those are really the three. I guess the convenience store as well, but I mean, it would be in use all day long for them. I wouldn't want to confine deliveries to a certain hour of the day because it's not possible. Different businesses deliver at different times. But just to have it open for the businesses, if we move that bus stop. And of course, the lighting, when you, once you walk in the evening, you see all of the lights that are out. It was amazing, and we were going to take the poll numbers.
We ran out of paper.
If we had had the supervisor of wires there that evening, he could have maybe marked down. This is where, we spoke to the chief about the safety issues with regard to the recent shooting. He gave us the information that he could and that he had, and people expressed their concerns. But when it got to issues of lighting and the sidewalk draw and the broken, you know, the chief, that's not his milieu, that's not his bailiwick. So it would be great to have people on board who actually handle these particular issues. And the counselor went down-
Point of clarification, Counselor Longkern.
Thank you. We were just speaking about that. On September 30th, the council voted. I put a resolution on for the superintendent of wires to go down and look at the lighting, and he did respond to us. He said, after a review of the street lighting at the intersection of Harvard and Main, I found there were four streetlights at the corners, two on Main and two on Harvard. These are owned by National Grid and are 250 watt sodium vapors and deliver 27,500 lumens. He has asked National Grid, and National Grid, it seems like, has agreed to change them to 400 watt sodium vapors, which deliver 50,000 lumens. So Superintendent Wires is on board, and that's Joe Hurley. If any other questions need to be asked by him.
We, I think, as a matter of fact, there was one that was out completely. I mean, at the corner of Harvard, on the side where Arthur's Pastry is, it was really very, very dark in that area, and that would be a great improvement there.
Sorry to interrupt. I just figured it was a good time.
Counselor Marks expressed all of the other issues that we noted that evening, and hopefully we can proceed from here and actually get something enacted because it is frustrating. It's been sometimes, in some circumstances, years waiting for something to be resolved, and that's why we keep returning to the city council chambers instead of watching the mystery on PBS this evening. So at any rate, go ahead if you'd like to.
I just want to thank everybody who came out, all the citizens who came to our group, and the SMOTTO members who continually give me information, and I'm able to dispense that out to the community. So, thank you.
I'd just like to say, this is a mutual admiration society, but Jim really, I mean, he dispenses all this information to us, whether it's about the Green Line or a street closure. I mean, he really is a resource, and I really want to thank him for all his hard work. And again, I thank all of the city councilors who came and the chief. He was really terrific, really, really, very nice evening was had by all. I hope we can do it again and resolve these issues and find some more problems that we can resolve. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Vice President Caraviallo and then Counselor Knight.
Thank you. You know, I agree with Counselor Marks that, you know, this was a great evening for all the neighbors to come out. And, you know, and like he said, until you get out there and walk the little side screens and all the little pots there, you just never get to see all these small things. You know, it started out as a safety walk, ended up going into a code walk and health walk and, say, multiple of issues. So, you know, if we do this again in another neighborhood, the council is right, if we have the DPW headers there, maybe Mr. Bavuso is the code officer, and other departments, that this way, these people can see this firsthand what we're talking about rather than, you know, we call on the phone, you know, get down there. This way, they're there, they see it firsthand, and there's no question about, oh, I didn't understand what was going on there. It was a great night. I said, the night was, it wasn't that cold though, and I'd like to see it done in every neighborhood in the town.
Thank you. Counselor Knight.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I'd like to thank the South Medford residents together for putting this event together as well as Chief Sacco for being so willing to attend. I think this is a great way to get things done in the community. It brings people together. It allows people the opportunity to meet their neighbors and meet some people in the city that they may not otherwise have the opportunity to interact with. I was unable to attend, as you can tell, I've been hacking pretty hard over here. I was a little ill over the weekend, and I would have liked to make it. And I do have a question. And one of the major problems that I see is, I drive through South Medford a lot of the time, would be vehicles traveling, say, down Main Street towards Alexander's, then we'll have a car double parked in front of Bocelli's, and we'll have a car trying to take a left-hand turn across the double line into slanted parking spots that are slanted the wrong way. And I didn't know if this was something that was raised during the meeting or if this was a topic of concern for the residents there. I understand that that's a little bit heavier of a lift than some of the things that are on this list right here. I think Counselor Marks did an excellent job in making a concise and precise punch list for us to take a look at, and I certainly wholeheartedly support the majority of the recommendations that have been made here. So with that being said, I was wondering if someone could enlighten me a little bit relative to the parking issue and the vehicles that take the turn across Main Street into the slanted parking spots that don't really seem conducive to that type of turn across the double yellow line.
It's, that is a very difficult situation over there. You have the cars on the opposite side heading towards Medford Square trying to get into the parking spots on the opposite side, and it is at a different angle than just going into, you know, diagonally into the spot. You do have the double parking, you do have the trucks that, you know, the deliveries when you have the liquor store getting whatnot, and there's, they have no other place to go. However, one of the concerns I have is when people are trying to back out of that spot where they're all head in parking, there are no mirrors that you can see. You know when some, they have the convex mirrors, and you can see the cars coming down the street? Right now, if you're familiar with it, you know how to play the traffic off the store windows if you can see down past, you know, the Yale Street. But I mean, it's a gamble. It's a gamble. There've been a few fender benders, but thankfully, nobody's really gotten hurt there, but it is. It's, I always learned that you can't take the left turn on a double yellow line, okay? So if there's an accident, who's at fault, you know? But, yeah, it is difficult when it double parks and when they try to take that turn because what happens is it starts to back up traffic at the intersection of Main and Harvard, and then you've got people stuck in the light, and the light changes, and then, you know, everybody's beeping on to another. But the thing would be nice if they did have some, one or two mirrors when you're backing up. You could look at the mirror and see traffic coming from up, down from the Princeton Street area. So, but yes, that is a problem. That is a problem.
Point of information, Vice President Caraviallo.
What was good was that the chief was there to see these problems happening as we were there.
He saw, he saw people parking in the, in the, in the spots that weren't there, saw cars speeding down Yale Street, you know, cars parking in front of residents' homes. So I say, these walkthroughs are good because you actually get to see the problems as they're happening. And I say, commend the chief, because I, I had walked that area with the chief 10 days prior during the afternoon, where we had gone in and spoken to many of the businesses about the parking issues down there also.
Hi, Mary Bryle, 106 Alexander Rav. I just want to thank everybody. It was really good to be out with the neighbors and get everyone together with the city officials and G Sacco. I just want to know, like, down the end of Street on Bonner Rav, crossing Mystic Ave, that's still a nightmare. It's a huge nightmare. The cars don't stop, I mean, I cross the street every day to go to work. Between the cars coming around the corner and coming out of the Dunkin' Donuts, going in and out, and then a lot of times the big trucks, which are not supposed to park on Mystic Ave, the huge trucks, they just park on Mystic Ave, taking the view of the pedestrian, not to be to see which way, and then, you know, they run in to get coffee and run back out, but they're not supposed to be on the, these are big trucks, like, now, it has nothing to do with Dunkin' Donuts, I'm not getting them in trouble, it's just people who are working, you know, picking up coffee and going their way. But, you know, so you can't cross the street, and then like if someone is letting you go this way, they tell you to go, this car behind you just like doesn't want to stop and they just swirl and, you know, they're gonna, you know, so you really gotta go stop what you're doing. You can't just think one lane is gonna stop, the other lane won't, because the person behind this car, you probably have seen it, they just swirl out like this. So that's amazing too, that there's not an accident there. So maybe, I know sometimes that's a hard one because the city will say it's the state and the state will say it's, you know, so maybe together, maybe the state highway and the city of Medford can get, you know, police department can work together out with something. Okay, but thank you everybody for coming and it was really good, it was great to be out with the neighbors and meet everybody and work together, so. And I think the rest of the Medford, it would be good for them to, to get out, all right? So thank you.
Thank you. On the motion, sending all these amend, Counselor Marks.
Just, just if I could, Mr. President, maybe if we can just go through and take a vote by the council to refer them somewhere now, some of them, and some of them, we can decide what we want to do, but the curb cut closure at Yale and Main, can we take a vote of the council to refer that to the Traffic Commission? The chief thought that was the appropriate place for them to review it.
Okay.
So if we can take a vote of the council.
To the Traffic Commission?
Send it to the Traffic Commission.
And then what other ones?
So we'll, want to take one at a time?
One at a time, okay. Yale and Main, the curb cut, to the Traffic Commission, the ballads.
The ballads installed on Main, the corner of Main and Harvard Street, same thing, send it to the Traffic Commission.
Traffic Commission. The bus stop being moved, where do you want to refer that to? It is, but we want to get public input from businesses and residents before we move it. I got to remind people too, not all members of the council could attend this meeting because it wasn't a public meeting. We, in, we would have been in violation of the open meeting law if more than four members were there talking about a specific issue. So in the future, I was advised that by, by an attorney, so.
We all met on Saturday. Okay.
No, it was where, where the council actually took action on some of these items, it could constitute an open meeting law if a quorum is there. So in the future, we may want to post this as a public safety meeting or a meeting, and then everyone can participate. Counselor, your next, your next item.
So those two will be sent, the curb cut and closure Yale and the ballads at the corner of Main and Harvard Street was sent to the Traffic Commission. The merging of the bus stop, I think I agree with them, maybe we should have.
Committee of the whole?
A committee of the whole meeting.
Transportation.
At least have one meeting that's a major moving of a stop. Transportation?
It's always been on the council agenda though, when people had the opportunity to come down and talk about it. We got a public outcry when Medford Square.
Do you want to have a committee of the whole or trans, whatever?
Whatever the council feels. Point of information, Counselor Delarusso.
Did we not have lengthy discussions about moving bus stops in Medford Square and be told by the MBTA that they would not do it?
In certain instances, the construction particularly affected the move in Medford Square.
We've moved other ones.
Yeah.
You know, that was one particular circumstance.
So we'll move that to the committee of the whole or transportation, whatever the council sees fit.
Committee of the whole where you can invite the actual businesses that it's going to affect, because I think that's the way we did it. We moved the bus stop, Rich Deal, and there was the salon where Cybot was, we did end up moving that.
Actually, it affects the commuters more than the business owners.
Commuters and the business owners.
And the particular location that's, the particular location that's being proposed to, it's actually blocking an egress to a household which is set back behind Palata Oil, so we definitely want to make sure the MBTA is all right with that.
We'll take a look.
Committee of the whole?
We can always tweak it, this is just, we can always tweak it.
So committee of the whole or transportation?
Committee of the whole would be fine.
Committee of the whole. The loading zone? Traffic Commission? They have to post it, they're the only authority that can do that, the loading zone.
Well, I think we should wait, if we move the bus stop, then we can talk about the loading zone, is that, does that sound all right?
Committee of the whole discussed it.
If one doesn't happen, the other one's not going to happen.
Mr. President?
Counselor Delarusso.
If I could mention that in past meetings we've had with my neighbors and businesses that the chief has recommended a couple of spots, if I remember correctly, different spots for loading zones, and it was he who actually shortened the length of the bus stop there to accommodate for more parking.
Counselor Marks, your next item.
Next one is poll number 513 in front of Atthe's Bakery. The light is dim or out, can we refer that to the Superintendent of Wires? Poll number 513 on Main Street in front of Atthe's Bakery. The fence at the corner of Alexander and the CAF, Counselor Delarusso was gracious enough to let us know that the city administration, along with the businesses, are working on some, something in that area, and maybe if we can just get a report back? Who's ever, just a report back to the administration?
It was an OCD project.
OCD, okay.
If we can get a report back from OCD, that'd be great, thank you Counselor. The sidewalk crumbling at Lakasha's Bakery, if we can refer that, and also the trimming of the bushes and improved lighting at Tough Spock to the DPW Commissioner. And the lighting issue at Columbus Park, if we can refer that to the Superintendent of Wires. And then, Mr. President, if we could take a vote on a proposal that would be in cooperation with the mayor and this council to hold these public safety walkthroughs throughout the entire community, along with the appropriate department heads, and the use of the reverse 911 to notify residents, I think that would be worth its weight in gold if we could set something up like that.
And we'll do it as an official council meeting so that it's publicly advertised and that all members can participate, is that okay?
So I'd like to set that up as a separate B paper or vote to get that proposal.
All right, so all the amendments, one second, I'm sorry. So all the amendments referred to the appropriate authorities that Counselor Marks just notated, the B paper will be under the jurisdiction of the council to call these meetings in cooperation with the mayor and the pertinent department heads. That's the B paper.
Right. Create a proposal where the mayor works with the city council in cooperation.
Who's going to create this proposal? Would you like to send it to a committee or a committee of the whole?
Well, we could do it in cooperation with the mayor, so we can do a committee of the whole, however we want to handle it, but I, I think it would only work with the administration being on board also.
Can I make one recommendation?
Absolutely.
We have an intergovernmental affairs committee? I think this is a perfect one for that.
That'd be fine with me.
And then report back to the entire council, is everyone okay with that? And that's a B paper. Name an address for the record, please.
Marie Senat Andre, 92 Bull Street, Medford, Mass. I feel a little bit disappointed because I live in south of Boston, south of Medford, and I knew nothing about this gathering, and I knew nothing about shooting in my neighborhood. That's why it's very important that we do get a call to tell us what's going on in our neighborhood. I have young kids and it's, it's really sad that I didn't know about it. And it's also, to me, it's very disappointing. Every time I attend these meetings, I'm the only black person here. There's no one, I mean, it seems like no one is involved in the city enough, and it just drives me crazy. There's so much issues going on in the city, and to see that no one is doing anything about it, it's just so disappointing. I've been here for hours and I just don't want to sit here all night and find out if they're going to talk about the 14-599, that's why I'm here. Will that be talked about?
14-599, hold on one second. Why don't you take a seat and we'll get back to you in one second while he looks it up. We're going to take these votes.
Okay.
And then we'll.
We'll let her speak.
No, no, do you want to speak more on this, this item?
No, no, after, she wants to speak on Water and Sewer.
Yes, I do. Okay, okay.
Water and Sewer, we'll bring it up if any council, 14-. Any more on the South Medford neighborhood meeting? Ms. Senat, do you have anything else at this point for the South Medford meeting? And I have to say, Mr. Silva has done more public output on this particular meeting. I apologize you weren't notified, but in the future, it's going to be a public meeting of the city council, which will be publicly advertised, but they're very welcoming if you give them your contact information.
And I appreciate the hard work that you all did. Like I said, I just did not hear about it. And for me who read newspaper a lot and get, trying to be educated, not knowing, so you know, there are a lot of people in Medford, it's out of Medford, who didn't know about this, so I just want to be part of what's going on in the city.
Absolutely. And Mr. Silva, right there?
I did. We exchanged information.
All right. He, I'll tell you, I get more emails from him than everyone in the community, so.
Keep it up, keep it up.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay.
All right, and we're going to get back to you on the 14-599 in a minute. On the motion, as amended on the A paper with the amendments, all those in favor? All those opposed, the ayes have it unanimously. On the B paper, for the council, intergovernmental affairs committee to gather at a public meeting as a subcommittee, before the roll is called, Counselor Knight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Bryle did come up and speak a little bit about the issues that she's had down at the end of Bonner and Mystic Ave, you know, in the past, and it seems to me that some of these issues still persist, so if we could include that as part of the B paper that's going to go to the committee on intergovernmental affairs, it'd be appreciated.
Mr. President, all?
Counselor Marks.
And I appreciate Counselor Knight bringing that up on behalf of Mary, who's been very involved in that area, but because it's Mystic Ave, I think we should also notify our state delegation. There's been a lot of issues, as you know, in that particular area, the crosswalk's unpainted, the lighting's poor, the median strip, you know, there's been a lot of issues, so if we can involve our state delegation in that particular area. The ironic thing is, there's the state DPW yard right on Mystic Ave over there, that's the ironic thing, and unfortunately, we can't get things resolved next to their own yard.
Okay, so Mystic and Bonner. Okay, on the B paper, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda.
Mr. President, may we take from the table item number 14-599?
City clerk is grabbing the paper right now. Item 14-599, this was a transfer request by the mayor for 159,340, which was passed. Section B, $62,500 was tabled. Section C, $55,500 was tabled, and just to refresh the council's memory, this was a negotiated contract with the DPW union. Everyone has received the increase, but this was the funding portion that was out of the Water and Sewer enterprise account to fund the employees that are currently assigned to the Water Department and the Sewer Department.
Move approval, Mr. President.
On the motion of approval, this is Water and Sewer, would you like to speak before we call the roll? On the motion of Counselor Delarusso for approval, name an address for the record again.
Marie Senat Andre, 92 Bull Street, Medford, Mass.
I'm sorry, on the, on the motion of Counselor Delarusso to take this off the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, the paper is now before us officially.
In motion for approval?
In a motion for approval, once again, by Counselor Delarusso, name an address for the record, please.
Marie Senat Andre, 92 Bull Street, Medford, Mass. I, before I make my speech, I would like to make sure I understand what I see here. The amount of the money that is listed, is that money that's like a plus, a surplus in the Water and Sewer?
It's money that is, it's money that is currently in the Water and Sewer account.
So it's, it's a profit, correct?
That's not all of it, that's just a.
That's just a little bit of money.
And the only thing this can be used for is something that is directly related to the Water and Sewer in the community, whether it's improvements, infrastructure improvements, as well as paying the employees that are assigned to that division.
And this money, how is it become? Is it something that the, is from the budget or is it money that we, the landlord, pay for Water and Sewer that they have this money left? I would like to understand that.
It is the money. It is the money that is brought in. The MWRA assesses the city of Medford. City of Medford then in turn sets the water rates through the Water and Sewer Commission. Any money that comes in after bills are paid, it goes into this account, and right now it's in a positive.
So right now it's a profit. Why do we have a profit in the Water and Sewer? That means we are overpaid. We are, should I continue? Everybody's talking.
Go ahead.
Okay, so to me, as an accountant, when I see money left over in an account, that mean we are overcharged. You guys, there's a profit. So if there's a profit, that mean we are, the rates are too high, they need to come down. And it was very upsetting when I see there's a subcommittee on October 28th, which I called to find out, well, may I attend? I was told, no, it was closed on October 28th meeting.
It says a public meeting, open.
I called City Hall and asked, and I was told, first the person didn't know what, what to tell me, and then they put me on hold and came back and said, no, it was a closed meeting, October 28th.
Point of information?
I, I think I was told today by one of the water commissioners that the meeting had been changed because, because the gentleman from the water company couldn't make it, so the meeting was going to be moved.
He could make that one.
Counselor Lungo Kern is the chairwoman?
Yes, as of, as, I have this, actually, the notice for next week's meeting up here because I was going to talk to Clerk Finn about it. It's scheduled for next week at 6:00 PM, but Woodcock, Chris Woodcock is one of the commissioners, could not make it. I believe we're going to do it on the 18th of November, where all the commissioners can make it, and that will be a, that's a public meeting.
That is a public meeting.
Absolutely.
Now.
The original one was a public meeting too.
Six o'clock.
But someone gave you better.
Well, I was not told that.
All right, go ahead, continue.
Living at Medford for 15 years, I was here when the engineer said to us that our water meter was no good, it needs to be replaced. Therefore, your rate will go up. So the water meters were replaced, sold to another city. Now, those water meter were no good, but they weren't thrown away, they were sold to another city, raise our rates, okay? Because we need new meters. We paid that, we get no credit, meters weren't working well, we paying a lot of money for Water and Sewer, we receive no credit. As a matter of fact, what they do here, if you have a balance for Water and Sewer in December, it is prone into your real estate tax, wish your mortgage goes sky high. Now, who voted and gave the right for the mayor or whoever to do that? It wasn't me. I didn't vote for something like that, okay? Because what happened when your mortgage goes so high, you could lose your home if you cannot pay the mortgage. Now, how is it the city have the right to move a water bill to your real estate tax? That I don't understand. Second of all, if you have money left, oh, I know what I'm talking about, if you have money left into your account, why are they asking for a rate increase? Again, that makes no sense to me. Why am I paying $1,600 a year for Water and Sewer when other cities are paying $200 a year? What is in our water? Why am I paying so much? What happened to the meter that was changed? We see no difference, and then they change how often we pay for Water and Sewer? My bills remains the same, there's no difference, it's still high. And they want more money? The city? The city all day it's about is how much can we take from the landlord? And we get nothing back. We get the street cleansed twice a year. That is ridiculous. Somerville cleans their street every week, and I've been talking about this since I've lived here. I'm the one cleaning my street, I'm the one cleaning my sidewalk, and I'm paying taxes. What do you guys do for me lately? Nothing. I come here, and you know, it's gonna continue because people are not organizing and making noise, and it drives me nuts. And you know, the mayor, he's smart. He use a, he's controlling everyone here. Why? We can't watch this on TV no more. We don't know what's going on. We don't see these meetings. I have to constantly print these out to see what's going on. And I'm paying taxes.
These, these meetings are publicized on Verizon and Comcast weekly.
I don't see it on Channel Three no more, like I used to watch it.
With all due respect, Ms. Senate, it was never on Channel Three. If it was on Channel Three, it was a replay of a member of Channel Three that may have played it during their time slot.
So they still show these on TV?
That's correct.
And what channel is that?
It's Channel sixteen on Comcast and, uh, twenty-two rather, it used to be sixteen, and forty-two or forty-three
Twenty-two, forty-two, what?
It's either forty-two or forty-three on Verizon. Comcast is Channel twenty-two.
So please, I'm still trying to figure why I'm paying sixteen hundred dollars for water bill a year? And why is it that city have the right to send my bill towards my real estate tax at the end of the year?
Mr. President?
Councilor Penta.
I'm gonna, you have a lot of questions into this resolution.
Oh, yes, I do.
So let's do the, let's do the first one first, okay? The, the council resolution that's here right now is regarding salaries to be paid in part from the Water and Sewer account, and this is allowed by law to do. Now, the part that I'll agree with you is that we're presently sitting on eight point four million dollars as a surplus in the Water and Sewer account, that the mayor does not want to give back or program for any construction projects because it hasn't come before us.
Point of information, Councilor Max.
Just if I could, I, I think Marie is here to speak about her water bill and some...
Yeah, we're gonna get to that.
No, I know, no, but I think she's here to speak about her water bill. She saw the paper that was, uh, listed as unfinished business, and it dealt with Water and Sewer. But I don't think you're here to speak on that particular paper. You were here to speak on why your bill's so high, so...
Let's take the vote on the paper.
I think you're better off taking the vote on the paper and suspending the rule so she can... I mean, you already gave your, uh, your statement.
Good, good point, Councilor.
But it's not regarding this paper.
It's not here regarding this paper. Give us one second, Marie. On the motion of Council...
On the motion, on the motion.
The motion, Councilor Penta.
The reason why this paper is laid on the table so long is because of the vote that took place by the council regarding the six hundred thousand dollars that the council voted to take out of the budget of this year, and we wanted to report back from the mayor as to how he was gonna offset the six hundred thousand dollars in the budget. Council voted unanimously to lay the paper on the table till we got that answer. We still haven't gotten that answer. So I'm gonna move to the paper, lay on the table till we get that answer.
All right, there's a motion to lay this on the table.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The chair is in doubt, please call the roll. Motion to lay this on the table. A no vote is to keep it in front of this body this evening, a yes vote will be to table it.
This was for the salaries, Mr. President?
For the salaries.
The salaries.
Salary only?
Yep.
Okay.
Vice President Caviolo. Councilor Delarussue.
No.
Councilor Knight.
No.
Councilor Longo Kern. Councilor Max.
No.
Councilor Penta.
Yes.
President Camusso.
No, by a vote of six nos, one yes, the paper remains before us. On the motion of Councilor Delarussue for approval, all those in favor?
Aye.
On the motion, Councilor Penta.
It's kind of ironic when the council can vote seven to nothing, waiting for a response to come back from the mayor, and, and you don't get it back, and this goes back to when we voted for this in June. This is now October, and that's number one, and number two, you're, you're taking the money out of that account for which, what happened to the six hundred thousand dollars? We're, we're gonna, we're gonna get a, a, a request to make all kinds of transfers from one account to another? Or we're gonna have like, six hundred thousand automatically gonna come from the Water and Sewer account to balance the budget again? I, I, I think this is wrong. If the council's gonna take votes, you should stick to your votes. You voted seven to nothing, every single one behind this rail, to get a report back.
Point of information, Councilor Knight.
As I understand it, the money that would be transferred from these retained earnings would be used to fund a contract, and the money that they're taking out of these returned, or these retained earnings to fund this contract is in appropriate use, because it's going to be used to provide the salaries for people that work in the delivery of our water and our sewer system.
So with that being said, why did you vote before, in June, seven to nothing, to lay it on the table to get a report back? As to what?
I'm not so sure it was...
Well, I think you, I think you should go back and check it out.
What date was it? Can you tell me?
Whenever we voted in June.
Whenever we voted in June, okay.
On the motion of Councilor Delarussue for approval, this does re- this, this does require a roll call vote?
It's on.
The clerk will call the roll.
John, it's dead.
The clerk will call the roll.
Vice President Caviolo.
Yes.
Councilor Delarussue.
Yes.
Councilor Knight.
Yes.
Councilor Longo Kern.
Yes.
Councilor Max.
Yes.
Councilor Penta.
No.
President Camusso.
Yes, by a vote of six in the affirmative, one in the negative, the motion passes. On the motion of Councilor Max for suspension of Rule Number Thirty-three, to hear the young lady at the podium. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Name and address for the record.
Marie Senat Andre, ninety-two Bull Street, Medford, Mass. Um, again, I apologize, I, that's why I ask if I am reading this correctly. I'm not a politician, so I don't know all the rules, but my main reason, again, for being here is the amount of money we are paying for Water and Sewer in Medford. Um, I, I'm suffering, it's really too high. Um...
Point of information, Councilor Delarussue.
Did we not ask, uh, for a committee meeting, uh, at the last city council meeting or the council before, meeting before, uh, to address this specific issue with the Water and Sewer Commission?
That is correct. Councilor, um, Council Chairwoman Longo Kern has a meeting scheduled that we just notified that it was rescheduled. It's to discuss Water and Sewer.
It's Tuesday, October twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
It's canceled.
That's canceled?
Councilor Penta.
That meeting, uh, for your ratification is for the purposes of the new tiered system that the city is engaged on, and the water rate increases as it's built into the system. Now, getting to your point, did you just say you were a landlord?
Yes, I am.
Is it a two-family house?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you should be getting at least six bills a year from the city. And if you're getting six bills a year, and if you're only paying sixteen hundred dollars, not only...
On me?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. If you're paying sixteen hundred dollars, and they're attaching that to your, you said they're attaching that to your real estate bill?
If, if I have the balance, if I can't pay it, they, they send it to my real estate tax.
So you're saying that the very last water bill you got was for sixteen hundred, or is this an accumulation?
Accumulation.
Oh, it's an accumulation?
Right. But that's sixteen hundred dollars a year for Water and Sewer, where other cities are paying two hundred something for the year.
I, I, I know, but that's...
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, how many kids you have in your house?
Me?
Yeah.
At one, one. She's about to go to college.
And what about your tenant?
Two.
Two, okay. So what's gonna happen is, um, I don't know if you'll get your particular resolution resolved, you'd be better going to the Water and Sewer Commission meeting, they meet in the afternoon once a month, and just explain to them that if you have a problem paying your bill, because it's too much, you can go into a payment agreement downstairs in the treasurer collector's office, and they will be able to do that. But if you just keep going and not paying for your bill, they will put that attachment on there.
And who gave them that right?
Pardon me?
Who gave them that right?
Oh, they do, you have to pay your bill if you don't...
I, I understand, I have to pay my bill, but who gave the city the right to put it on my real estate tax?
State law allows them to put it onto your tax bill.
And, I don't think it's happened elsewhere.
It's Massachusetts state law.
That they can't do that?
Yes. If, if you contact Fred Pompeo in the treasurer assessors office, he'll refer to the exact section of law.
The best way to avoid this is to pay the bill if you can afford it when it comes, otherwise...
I don't have a problem paying my bill. When the board cannot explain to me how they come with the rates, I don't care. You could work, I work at MIT, I could bring a mathematician here, and they would not understand how the heck they come with the rates, okay? Those rates make no sense, and for them to have so much money, one point eight million?
No, 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 eight point four million.
Well, oh, you see, you guys are making it worse. They have so much money and they wanna raise our rates again?
Well, that's the mayor. This is the mayor's proposal, not the council. This is the mayor raising the rates.
Part of the new DPW yard.
So why do I vote? Tell me. Can you please tell me why I vote?
Marie.
Why do I vote?
Ms. Senate, part of the new DPW yard is being funded through this.
Wait a minute, slow down, that is not true. We have nothing in front of us that says that.
We haven't yet, but we were told all along, Councilor Penta.
Yeah, but we don't have it, and since we...
It exists.
It exists.
Yes. No, 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 exactly. I'm not talking about the rates, but we did all along know that the DPW yard was in part being funded by the Water and Sewer accounts. Councilor Knight.
In taking a look at the records for Paper fourteen five nine nine, no roll call vote was taken.
Get that, Councilor Penta?
I, I, listen, all I know is in that night, seven members of council agreed, cause you laid the paper on the table. How do you lay the paper on the table without taking a vote?
Continue.
I don't know, I don't know where to go, this is...
You were talking about the mathematician.
This is unbelievable.
Mr. President?
Are you all set?
Is there a choice, really?
No, 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 you can have the floor, Councilor Max. The next meeting will be?
November eighteenth.
Hopefully, if nothing's scheduled, Clerk Finn, November eighteenth at six PM, Room two oh seven, which is right next door to this room. The public's welcome. We're gonna talk, discuss the water rate increases, cause we agree with you.
But it won't be her, it won't be her problem.
Um, and then new tiered system, I guess we can add to that.
And what time is that, six?
Six PM.
Six PM. Point of information, Councilor Knight.
Um, Ms. Andre, I do also believe that, um, the water commission does meet monthly. Um, I don't have that information in front of me right now as to when the water commission will meet again, but, um, I know it's posted on the city's website.
They used to meet in the morning, where I would have to leave work, uh, or be late for work.
It's in the afternoon now.
I think it's in the afternoon now.
Now they changed it to the afternoon because a lot of people used to complain. But afternoon, I still have to leave work, cause I work. I don't work in the afternoon only.
I'm in the same ship you are, I believe.
Right, so it, it, they make it very difficult, and, and I know, that's how, what I used to know is the board was elected by the mayor. It seems like everything is done by the mayor. And I don't know how the city is run, it makes no sense to me. I feel, seriously, if I could move, I would move. I'm so disappointed, so disgusted with the way the city runs. I'm sorry, that's how I feel right now. I don't, I don't get anything for buying a house here. Everything is going up, everything costs more money, and no, it's not that I don't wanna pay my bill, but why am I paying water bill, Water and Sewer, sixteen, eighteen hundred dollars a year for water? Makes no sense. I have one kid in the house, and she's in high school, going to college. I don't have a lot of people in my house. I work all day, so, and my tenants work all day. They're grown, they're not kids. So it makes no sense.
How many people in the tenants' unit?
Two.
Two, okay. So four people, sixteen hundred a year?
That's it. That makes no sense. It just makes no sense to me, and I don't know. I, I'm just fed up, and...
Thirteen.
That's why people, I feel that the counselors, you guys try, but there's no power. I'm sorry, that's how I feel, and I've said it before, and I, I take my voting seriously, and I go and I vote, and then I come here, I state my case, and you guys listen to me, you try to get the mayor to attend meetings, he doesn't show up. What does that leave me? I'm, I'm just disappointed. Thank you.
Councilor President? Councilor Knight, you all set?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Max.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, Marie? If I could, I, I know, I know you, I, I remember, it has to be eight years ago that you came before the council, and at the time, uh, I believe it was right around when we were changing the meters, and, um, you had a giant water bill that you got, um, and you disputed it, I believe, at the time with the Water and Sewer Commissioners, and, um, I believe they replaced your meter back then, was that not correct?
They checked my meter, my meter was fine, and then we, I guess, they finally gave me some credit.
Right.
But, as I stated to you, I remember you were, you were still a counselor, I could have lost my home, cause my mortgage went way up. I mean, you add sixteen hundred into someone, and they keep it for the whole year. The new rate of your mortgage, they don't just add it for a few months. So that whole year, I had to pay more money on my mortgage, and then they gave me a credit, which didn't mean any, you know what I mean?
No, I understand that, but a- at the beginning, you questioned why we bought new meters as a city.
Yes, I did.
And if I could just state to you that back some ten years ago, roughly half the meters in the community were being estimated because they were malfunctioning. So when you estimate a meeting, it's someone at City Hall saying, I believe based on what I'm looking at, that they consumed this amount of water. Now, I, as a rate payer and a taxpayer, I don't want someone estimating my bill.
I want actual.
I want actual usage. So we, as a community, knew that we had a problem with these meters that were twenty-five and thirty years old, cause they were, the meters that were, uh, installed in our homes, thought it was best to move forward with meters that would be accurate. So if you use X number, you pay for X number. There's no if, ands, or buts about it, that's what you pay. So that's why the city had to move forward, because we were estimating more than half the residents of this community their water bill, and, and in my opinion, that was unfair. The second point is that this council has been pushing for an outside meter, so when you water your lawn, you don't have to pay a sewer cost, uh, when you wash your car, you don't have to pay a sewer cost, and that was implemented back a few years ago. We also, which we're gonna meet under Councilor Longo Kern shortly, is we're gonna create a new tiered system in the community. So you're gonna pay not the one Water and Sewer rate that you currently pay now, so you pay the same water rate that Tufts University pays. You pay the same rate that the Budweiser plant pays.
Nice.
Not the same bill, the same rate, and what we said is, it should be based on your consumption. So if you're a high-end user, you should pay more, cause you're taxing the system, you're using the system more, you should pay a higher rate. So, uh, the mayor hired a consultant, he sat down with the Water and Sewer Commissioners, he's been meeting off and on with the council, giving us, uh, some, uh, how the project's gonna work, and we're gonna meet finally on this within the next couple of weeks. But what, what that's gonna do is, it's gonna allow someone to conserve. So if your issue is that your bill is too high and you're paying too much, we know your meter's probably accurate now, it's a new meter, and it's, you know, quite frankly, it's probably accurate. You'll be able to have a direct impact on lowering your bill by doing whatever you can to conserve.
Right.
That has never happened really in the past, and, and your rate will be based on that, so you'll end up paying a lower rate than you currently pay. You may have a savings. And just if I could, Mr. President, because you brought up so many valid points, I agree, the eight point four million, uh, that's a surplus, it's excessive. Members of this council have asked to offset, offset the rates, so whatever the rate goes up, like this year, it's good, water's going up nine percent. That's not us, that's the MWRA charging us nine percent more. That, we wanted to offset that rate, so you would not get hit that additional nine percent. So we, as a council, recognize that with this surplus money, it should be used to offset rates, it should be used to do infrastructure improvements that could eventually lower your bill. You know, right now, the infrastructure is crumbling under the ground. You don't see it. If our sidewalks and streets are crumbling, can you imagine these pipes that are ninety years old under the ground?
Back, back then, they did mention some pipes were, um, leaking and...
Right.
Oh, I remember.
Right, and, and it's called INI, Inflow and Infiltration, and we're still dealing with that today, cause we don't have a program in place to address this. So every time it rains, we have water that's going into our outdated sewer pipes, and it's going out to Deer Island, and it's being treated as raw sewage.
And we're paying for it, and we're paying for it.
And I'm paying for it, we're all paying for it. But this is what we need to use the surplus money to address, and in my opinion, the administration has fallen short to make these improvements. He really, the administration is at fault.
And we're talking like, I, since I've been here fifteen years, I've always had issues with the water. Always have issue with Water and Sewer. So far, that's the main reason I've been to these meetings, is my water bill. I mean, street cleaning, yeah, I'm upset, twice a year, that's not enough.
And you mentioned other communities that pay two hundred a year?
Yes.
I would love to hear those communities.
Woburn, you know why they... Woburn, you know why they, well, maybe because Wilmington? Those areas don't pay us...
Do they have their own water supply and supply?
Right. They have their own water. Yeah, yeah, they do.
Right. And what about their sewage?
I don't think they pay sewage.
They may not have sewage. So, I mean, I think you have to compare apples to apples when you look at something and say, well, they're paying less than we are. You know, as I stated last week, believe it or not, it costs one cent to get a gallon of fresh drinking water to your house. One cent. You know, when you state that, people, like, they're amazed. That's what it costs.
But I'm paying.
That's the best buy in the world. One cent to get a gallon of fresh drinking water to your house. Can they do better, lower the rate? Absolutely. I agree with everything you said. But until the administration's changed, until something happens in this community, we're going to be seeing, it's going to be Groundhog Day. We're going to revisit the issue over and over again.
And meanwhile, they have a surplus. That doesn't leave a great taste in my mouth. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to ask...
Counselor Longo Kern, then Counselor Knight.
I was going to ask Marie, do they have a check to see if you had a leak?
They have come to my house. I have no leak. They could come back again and see, but...
I don't know if the, it should, it should show on the, it sounds like you might have a leak. I mean, Counselor Knight just figured out how much usage you were using.
I just did some figures. It looks like you're using like, close to 6,000 gallons of water a year. And I'm sorry, yeah, 6,000 cubic feet of water a year.
And mind you, I don't even have a washing machine in my house.
In each cubic foot, the equipment's at eight gallons.
Let's see if we can have the...
Ron Baker.
The appropriate department, look at the, there was, once the new meters went in, they were supposed to have a system that could detect a leak. Let's have them check 92 Bow Street specifically.
9092.
9092 Bow Street specifically, to see if there's any leaks through the system that we were told we were going to be able to use to help situations like this.
And I'm not being fresh. I'm asking a serious question, because we've had this problem in the city before. Do you get along with your tenants? Because some tenants, all right, no.
I'm a great landlord.
All right.
My tenants love me.
The reason I ask you, and Jean Martin behind you, I know people that have ran that water and have got the alerts.
Oh, I know.
Because, just because they're fighting with the tenant.
Of course, of course. No. I'm very lucky. I have two great young, you know, no problem.
Leaky toilet, though. You've checked their apartment?
I go in their apartment. I checked my apartment. So, but they do have a way of seeing where the water's being used more. I know the city can't see it.
Yeah, let's check, let's check your house.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Name an address.
Jean Martin, 10 Cumming Street. I'm glad that this woman came up to speak on this topic, and I'm glad that she's here. And I encourage her to get her neighbors to come out, because this is a big issue. You can do, through a cumbersome process, as a landlord, have a separate meter put into your apartment. But it's very cumbersome to have a separate meter for your tenant, so that you have a separate bill from them. But ultimately, according to the law, you are still responsible if they don't pay their water bill. So it really didn't make much sense for me to go through that process.
In Massachusetts, I don't think you can charge for water a tenant. You can't physically call it for the water. They can raise your rent, but you cannot charge a tenant for water in the state of Massachusetts.
Right. So anyway, I just want to thank her for coming up. And she made a good point about comparisons to cities, apples to apples. I think what we should do is see what Melrose pays, or whoever else is on the MWRA list, and see what they pay, you know, and how much overage they might have.
Same thing. She's using a lot of water.
It's the same.
It's the same.
The rate structure, yeah, whatever. Because we do have an overage of $8 million, which is absolutely ridiculous. We know that the mayor is doing that, because he wants his bond rating to be low. We know that he's misusing the money. He should be returning that money back into the infrastructure of the city so that the water rates will actually be lower. And he's not doing that. And that's on him. And so, thank you.
Move the question.
Counselor Penta?
One quick thing, to get back to what Counselor Max was alluding to. With this new, where's Marie? Is she still here? You still here? With this new tiered rate system that you should have gotten in your last bill, they didn't, it was very hard. It wasn't even addressed. It didn't have the right time, the date, it wasn't stamped. And it gave 0 to 800, 800 to 1,600, and 1,600. Those were the three tiered sections. Counselor Max alluded to getting after those people who use the most amount of water, they would be paying more. Unfortunately, the way the Water and Sewer Commissioners set this up, the people who use the most of water, which would be commercial, in the commercial section, they're going to be paying one stationary rate. That's the middle rate of the tiered rate system. So if you own a home, as you do, and you use more than 1,650 cubic feet of, your house altogether uses more, you're going to be paying at a higher rate than someone who uses a lot more water. And these are some of the questions that need to get addressed and discussed at the commission coming up, because it's a little bit unfair. I mean, they're saying you average it out. You have one person living on the first floor, and five people living on the second, and three people living on the third. And they're telling you to get the number, average it out, and divide it by three, and that's what everybody should be paying. And then it doesn't work out.
That makes no sense.
It doesn't work that way.
No.
And that's what we need to address. You know, I think they probably came out with this a little bit too early. It should have been discussed a little more. But these are some of the questions that need to be, that need to get resolved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Motion for approval.
We approve it.
To send it to the Water Department, 9092 Bow Street. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the eyes have it. Offered by Counselor Longo Kern. Be it resolved, that the casino issue be discussed, to update Medford voters on the harm that a casino in Everett would do to Medford. Counselor Longo Kern.
Thank you, Counselor Camuso. I know it's a loaded discussion, but I think it has, has to be brought up. We have two weeks till we are making a huge vote on question three. And when you talk to people around town, especially, my business is in the Wellington area, especially in the Wellington area, South Medford area. I mean, people are a little nervous that we are going to have a casino in Everett before long. So I just wanted to at least bring this up, let the voting public know. I know it's late, but people do watch. Question three is a big deal. You're voting to repeal the 2011 vote, which allowed resort casinos to operate within Massachusetts. There is obviously the brochure where you can read about all the questions on the ballot. And I have question three here. I also did some research with regards to pros and cons. And it seems like, to me, you know, there's an issue back and forth, pros and cons to the job, the positives about creating jobs. But even that can be rebutted. If you go to, there's a number of myths and facts about the jobs in the casinos. So what I am concerned about is, that trumps anything, is the crime. Crime is number one. I mean, we see what's going on in the South Medford neighborhood the last few months. And I truly feel that a casino is going to increase crime within our neighborhoods. It is going to trickle into the Wellington area, the South Medford area. North Medford is going to feel a hit. I know one thing, when you read the ballot question, when it talks about crime, Indiana prosecutors needed an additional court just to handle casino-related crimes. We are going to have one of the largest casinos in Massachusetts, if not, you know, one of the biggest in the country. And it's, it's very scary. You know, people who are raising families do not want a casino near their children, near their schools. And the types of crime, we've been over that. But I think it's going to bring a whole, we already have, you know, the drug issue is another debate, but drugs, prostitution. I can go on and on about the crime that the casino is going to bring. Number two is the traffic. The traffic is disgrace in Wellington Circle. And again, it trickles into Medford. It's only going to get worse, and it's going to get a lot worse. You also have the issue of businesses. A casino will kill the economic base in Medford. It will kill our businesses. It will create layoffs and closures of our small businesses that, you know, can't afford that. And we don't, we don't want that to happen. We are going to bear the burden to the fruits of whatever is going to, you know, taking however much money, when is going to give Everett per year. We're going to bear the burden, the city of Medford. So I want, I really wanted to put this on. I know, you know, some people are in favor of casino, but I truly feel that it's going to hurt Medford. And I have three young children, and I don't want to see this happen right, right in our own backyards. I could go on. I did some research today, but I know it's late. And I'm sure that a couple of other counselors want to speak on it. I just wanted to let everybody know, question three is on the ballot. If you vote yes, you will repeal the law. Should, could it be something that could go down in Springfield and in other communities, maybe. But right in Everett, in this thickly settled area, I don't think we have the street capacity for it with regards to traffic. And I don't, and I don't think our law enforcement should, should have to bear this burden, nor our residents.
Thank you. Counselor Delarussa?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Counselor Longo Kern, for bringing this matter up. I did want to speak tonight, not on this issue in particular, but remind voters, we've seen in recent years decrease in lack of interest in elections and voting. And you bring up one particular ballot issue that's on there, referendum issue. But we have to elect a new governor, lieutenant governor, all the state offices, a representative to the Great General Court, a senator. So we have to, a United States Senator and Congressperson. And we have to address all these referendum issues. And I just want to echo Counselor Longo Kern's urging to the citizens to get out and vote.
If I may, if I may, just real quick, as the chair, I think this is going down a slippery slope, where it's a political question. So I would just ask counselors not to, because this body has sometimes went down this in the past, and...
There's never a problem there.
I'm just asking the counselors to...
I understand.
It's a political question. It's no different than getting up here and saying, support candidate A or candidate B.
So I understand the president's concerns. And my point maybe was a little long to get at. But I urge citizens to use that resource that the counselor has in her hands. Maybe if she can hold it up and show it, that it's a guide to the ballot questions. And so that we urge, as a counselor, all the citizens to get out and vote and to, and to be well-informed by using these resources that are available to them, from the Secretary of State.
Name an address for the record.
Jean Martin, 10 Cumming Street, and I can talk about it. Thank you. And of course, as you know, I'm against having a casino, but the casino is coming.
Jean, Jean, we're not taking stances on this issue. You can talk about... No, no one can. This is a, this is a government forum. It's not a political forum.
Really? What? What? Let's speak.
Counsel, if you want, we can, we can put this off for a week and ask the Ethics Commission for guidance.
No, no, this, this has an impact. She's giving her opinion as it relates to the question. On a ballot question. That's okay. There's nothing wrong with that. This council voted 7 to 0 on three separate occasions dating back last year.
For the issue, not on a ballot question.
Ballot, she can discuss the ballot question if she wants.
I would ask that we table this for one week and get guidance. This is a political question.
You can speak, you just don't talk about the ballot question, then, if that's the issue.
We're going to be getting sued by our government tomorrow morning. We allow this to come up.
Well, you know, he's got a point there.
No, seriously.
The man is a very powerful person.
No, we're not worried about that. We're worried about following the mass general law.
Oh, okay. Just in general, it's...
She can speak about casinos. Speak about casinos.
If it comes in, we need to be prepared for when, for if it comes in. Let's put it that way. Because I've talked to a lot of people that live outside of this area, and they're all voting, they're all just... And so it's going to come. And if it comes, what are we going to do? How are we going to prepare for what, how are we going to prepare Wellington Circle for the traffic? How are we going to prepare law enforcement? And firefighters, and everybody else that's involved, DPW workers and everybody else? We need to prepare for what is inevitable. In my opinion, it's inevitable. It's coming. So we need to prepare ourselves as a city for what is coming to hit us. And it's going to be a big hit. Socially, economically, you name it. It's going to make a cultural change in that whole region, Wellington Circle. It's going to make a huge cultural change for that whole region, including me, because I'm kind of like not far from that, up Route 16. Route 16 traffic's going to get backed up, and it's inevitable. So I just wanted to say that, that we need to be prepared for it. We need to have a master plan. We need to get everybody on board with what we're going to do when it comes in. I'm against it, but it's coming. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor Penta? Today, I was at a conference down in Plymouth, and this was one of the concerns that were brought up. And so we won't get into the subject matter of each ballot question other than the fact that people have a huge responsibility to vote. And by having this responsibility to vote, Counselor Lindell, if you don't mind, this ballot question has gone out to each and every person in this community. They should read it, make their own decisions. There are a lot of constitutional offices up for grabs. You can't complain about something wrong with government if you don't pick yourself up and get involved and go and vote. And that's the bottom line. You can't say it any other way. You know, I don't think the council sees it. Maybe individually, a council can express their own opinion off the record. You know, not at a council meeting, that's one thing. But more importantly, the fact of the matter is that you can go and vote. These questions are there to be asked. There are candidates running for office, and they have to be taking positions when they're asked. The candidates who are running have to be asked. But the underlying theme to this whole commentary is basically this. Don't complain if you're not going to be involved by voting or actively participating in some shape, manner, form, whether it be in the discussion, supporting a candidate, not supporting a candidate, supporting an issue, not supporting an issue. Because that's what government's all about. And that's the problem with this country is right now.